Good evening and welcome to the July 21st, 2015 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Garabetian.
Here.
Sinanyan. Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Devine, would you please lead us in the flag salute today?
I will, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation by Chaplain Al Garciazo from Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
I am here tonight at this city council meeting and are glad to live in a country where we enjoy civil and religious liberties. I pray that you will bless this meeting, also bless our mayor, our city council members, our city staff, as well as the residents of our city. May Glendale continue to shine and be a model city in Southern California. I pray now that you will consider our agenda. May everything that we do and say tonight reflect your love and your mercy. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend. Mr. Clark, may we have your report?
The agenda for the July 21st, 2015 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, July 17th, 2015 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The agenda was also intended to be posted at the Washington Court Hotel's Business Center. However, due to a posting error at the Washington Court Hotel, the agenda was not posted at the hotel and therefore Councilmember Sinanyan will not be able to participate in this meeting.
Thank you. May we have the next item?
Presentations and appointments, 3A Agenda Preview for the meeting of Tuesday, July 28th, 2015.
Ms. Beers.
Tuktalian, Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. Next week, there are no items on the Glendale Housing Authority Agenda, but there are a number on the Glendale City Council's meeting preview. Under Consent, under 4B, it will be a report from the Fire Chief regarding weed abatement charges for 2014-15, followed by a report by the City Attorney's Office regarding cancellation of the August 4th meeting due to national night out. 4D is a report by the General Manager of GWP authorizing the City of Glendale to quick claim a utility easement at 1520 Rema Vista Drive. And at 4E is a report by our Chief Information Officer recommending to enter into a negotiation and award agreement with SoCal Technologies to purchase citywide copiers. Under Action Items, at 8A is a report from Director of Public Works regarding energy-efficient lighting improvement projects at various Glendale facilities, followed by a report by GWP Director regarding an award of a design-build contract for the Kenneth and Ben LeMond water main replacement projects. 8C is a joint report by the Director of CDD, Fire Chief, and the Chief Information Officer regarding a PSA, or Professional Services Agreement with EdgeSoft Incorporated, to expand the scope of work to develop additional functionality to the city's City Services Interface System, also known as CSI. 8D is the Director of Community Development regarding proposed ordinance amendments to the City of Glendale's Building and Safety Code, which would provide expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. At 8E is a report by the City Manager's Office regarding the Commission on the Status of Women's 2015 to 2018 Strategic Plan, followed by the final report, which would be asking Council designate a voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Thank you. And what's next?
3B, Appointment of Board and Commission Members by Garabetian, July 14, 2015. 3B1, Armik Avadisian, Community Development Block Grant Committee. 3B2, Shant Sahakian, Arts and Culture Commission. 3B3, Sevak Benlian, Design Review Board. 3B4, Edmund Chasadurian, Audit Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Garabetian.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move items 3B, 1, 2, 3, and 4, and also I see Mr. Sahakian is in the audience after we vote on this item. Maybe I would like to invite him to the podium if he likes to say a few words.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second. I do have a quick comment, which is with Councilmember Weaver leaving, Judy Palmer, I believe, was his DRV appointee, and just to communicate to my colleagues that that leaves us without a landscape architect on the board. So as we move forward in the future with our appointments, I think especially now given the drought, it's important that we try to fill that somehow with a landscape designer. And in lieu of that, I hope that staff has somebody on staff that can review plans and make sure that any landscaping is appropriate for the area, the neighborhood in the drought. I second the nominees.
Thank you. So the DRB is one of just a few commissions that have a requirement for the makeup of the members, and one of them is that one of the members be a landscape architect.
I don't believe anymore it is a requirement, it's a guidance or recommendation that somebody be on the board that has that background, but it's no longer a requirement.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garabetian.
Yes.
Sinanyan. Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Sahakian if you'd like to say first.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, first, thank you Councilmember Garabetian for the nomination, and thank you all for the support. One of my very first art classes was actually at Brand Library and Art Center many, many years ago, and throughout all the different experiences in this city, I ended up in a creative industry career. So I'm very much looking forward to the opportunity to hopefully help with fellow commissioners further advance the arts and culture in this great city that we have. So thank you again for your support.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more nomination to make.
Yes.
If I may, while I'm at it, for Historic Preservation Commission, Ms. Desiree Shire. I had the pleasure of serving with her on Historic Preservation Commission when I was a Commissioner, and she's done a great job and she's a great asset for that commission. So I'm nominating her to be reappointed.
Okay. Is there another? So that will be on the agenda for next week. Is there another vacancy on that board?
Yeah, it's yours.
Mine? I have a nominee if I'm not on the agenda, though.
Anytime you're ready to.
You can always nominate.
Well, then I will nominate Mike Morden for the Historic Preservation.
Darn it. Okay. And I believe there's one more because you were my appointee.
Yes.
And I have not filled that. Okay, so I'll, I will get on that. And 3C, why don't you read that, but we're going to hold that over until Mr. Sinanyan gets a chance to present the nominee personally. But you can, you should read that in and we'll agree to carry it over.
3C, Appointment of Board and Commission Members. Sinanyan, July 14, 2015. 3C1, Alex Parahon, Audit Committee.
We can just carry that over to the certain.
Yes.
We'll just bring it back to the 28th.
Okay. Very good. Let's move on to the next item.
For consent items, the followings are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
I'll second.
I move the consent calendar.
And I'll second again.
I don't have any cards. I don't have any requests to pull, so let's take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garabetian.
Yes.
Sinanyan. Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
City Council and Staff Comments.
Staff comments, Council comments. Ms. Friedman.
Sure. First, as I mentioned last week, tonight I wanted to ask my colleagues to adjourn in the memory of Sheila Murray, and I will read her remembrance at the end of the evening, if that's okay. And secondly, today I did a tour of USC Verdugo Hills Hospital, and I know that several of my colleagues have done the same to see the facilities since it was taken over by USC. And I prom, and it's a beautiful facility, and they're doing a great job. And I promised them that I would tell the community that they offer beautiful meeting rooms free of charge to nonprofits and community groups. They don't charge any rent, and they have several rooms of different sizes. And they wanted to get the word out because they're not being used and they want them booked all the time. And I know I get a lot of calls from nonprofits saying, "How come I have to pay $100 to be at the library or whatever?" So now is your chance to have your meeting for free. And it can be a monthly meeting, even a weekly meeting. They're open, so just give them a call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We do have Onik coming up to announce a rescheduling of one of our most important events.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. My name is Onik Bolanikyan, Community Services Manager for the Parks Department. As you are aware, Cruz Night on last Saturday, July 18th, was canceled because of severe thunderstorms and lightning, and Brand Boulevard was pretty wet when we got there around 8:45. So we went ahead and decided, after making a few phone calls, we decided to cancel the event. And looking at some social media posts and some comments and calls that we got, we decided to reschedule for August 29th. So Cruz Night is on August 29th, 22nd. Annual Cruz Night will have the same entertainment, jumping jack flash, the smooth sounds of Santana, and the chantes between 5:30 and 10:30 on Brand Boulevard. Main stage will be at the corner of Brandon Milford. Just want to let you know that we have a Cruz Night Committee, and we start planning in November of each year, so it's an eight-month process. And the Cruz Night Committee is consisted of various city employees, citywide. We have some from the Parks Department, and I want to name a few and thank them for a job well done the last couple of years I've been heading the Cruz Night Committee. And I want to thank, publicly, I want to thank a few employees, one being Patricia Bangcore from Parks, Chris Peplo from Parks. Department of Communications and Community Relations, Tom Lorenz, Dan Bell, Tamar Sad, and Dean Lopez. From the Economic Development Department, Jackie Bartlow. From PD is Lieutenant Bracken, Sergeant Buzykin, Sergeant Tweedy, Officer Maluf, and Officer Linder. From the Fire Department is Brandy Villanueva, Inspector Halpert, and Inspector Ahern. And from the Public Works Department is Savada Homper, Swamiya, Regina Wheeler, Gerald Kemp, and David Liu. Because of these individuals, Cruz Night has run smoothly without any problems. So with that being said, we hope to see all of you out there on the 29th and basically send somewhere off with a positive note. Any questions? I know we have the new flyer up there, if you have any questions and.
I know there were some tough moments early Saturday morning as you were trying to decide.
Saturday morning, staff got on brand, we were on brand at 8:30 in the morning. PD closed Brand in about 10, 15 minutes. I mean, we were really on time. And then around 8:50, we had a bomb come in, we experienced a lot of lightning, a lot of thunder, and our staff, we were setting up the stage, and our sound company came in and started setting up, you know, all the metal pieces, and that's when we decided this is a hazard and safety is first. So we thought about safety of our staff and our vendors. So that's why I made the call and talked to Mr. Duran and Mr. Ochoa.
Okay. So it's not this Saturday, it's the Saturday following?
August 29th.
August 29th.
Yeah, August 29th.
August 29th, not July.
August 29th, not July.
August. Good. I'd be out there. Where are all the cars, Ron?
What we did too is we left Brand at 10 o'clock, rushed to the Civic Auditorium, called 300 of our participants, called our vendors and our community groups and told them not to come in, and the event was canceled. And thanks to, you know, the City Communications Department with all the press releases and social media blitz that we had, I think we got the word out that the event was canceled.
Okay.
And then when I left the city at 4 o'clock, it was raining and pouring, so I think it was a really good.
Good call.
A good call on my end, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Onik.
Heartbreaking, a very good call.
Thank you.
Mr. Garabetian.
Yes, last Saturday I had two important events to go to. One was the Cruz Night, and it was canceled, but the other one was the Glendale Historical Society's annual meeting. And I was there to present an award, which is a very important award, Preserve America Award, that is for the great job that they've done on the doctor's house, and it was signed by the First Lady Michelle Obama. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. And shall I announce tomorrow's event at the Americana, or are you going to plan to do that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So as everyone knows, Glendale is a host city for the Special Olympics, and the torch relay run will be making its way into Glendale tomorrow. And the best place to see it is at the Americana. A good time to arrive would be about 5:00 PM. And as you know, we're hosting teams from the Republic of Armenia, Dominican Republic, and Bonner. We expect many of the Special Olympic athletes to be there at that time. In fact, they're arriving this evening and throughout the day tomorrow. So it'll be a great time to cheer them on and to be very proud about all the hard work that Glendale has done to be a host city for these athletes, as well as their participation in the Special Olympic Games. Anything from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item.
Six Community Event Announcements, Three Mets.
Okay, I have a card from Carol Boucher.
Hi, I'm Carol Boucher with Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association, and I'm here to announce that this coming Thursday, 7 o'clock at Brand Library, there's going to be a community meeting on traffic and water. We'll have the Police Chief, Robert Castro, and we're going to have GWP General Manager, Steve Zern. I know everyone is interested in the traffic issues, but water issues are equally important. And as Steve Zern will tell us right now, and by the way, there will not be any PowerPoints.
And that's, we've been instructed of that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I mentioned last week, it's an honor to be asked to participate in this. It's obviously a very hot topic today, and it gives us an opportunity, me an opportunity to come before the folks and let them know how we're doing in relation to some of the state mandates, talk about our enforcement efforts, talk about how this has impacted us operationally and financially, and really, it's going to be a lot of good news because our city has responded extremely well, and we're doing very, very well. And so I'll be very proud to talk about that. And I'd like to compliment Carol on this, because I don't think I've been involved in a community meeting that has had this extensive outreach from wonderful pictures of these young men that are there, all the way up until, you know, there's been quite a bit of publicity. Carol has done a great job, and I think this has gone beyond just, you know, this is a community meeting that I think has gone beyond just a homeowners' meeting. So that'll be good. And I think those, these are two very, very important topics. So again, I'm honored to be involved, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, it's for the entire community, it's not just Northwest Glendale. Thank you. Oh, did I say it's at Brand Library? If I didn't, Brand Library, 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Herbert Milano?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be here again. I'm a Glendale resident, and I'm bringing to you an invitation to attend, and for the general public, to attend the Second Annual Picnic, a place where we can discuss and meet the powers that be with regard to issues that pertain to Glendale. The Glendale Coalition for Better Government is very much interested in transparency, accountability, and responsibility in government. The members of this coalition have a significant amount of experience, years of involvement with the city, so there's almost institutional knowledge as well with regard to Glendale Water and Power, city policies, city finance, the election process, and so on. So it's an invitation for the council members to attend and meet members of the community who are interested. And our objective, obviously, with this event that takes place at Glen Oaks Park, at the community building, is to try to engage a larger segment of the community of Glendale. It's not restricted to the areas of Glen Oaks, but generally citywide, as we are trying to make a significant effort to do an outreach and find those individuals with professional knowledge that can assist us in evaluate the governance of the city. So I hope you can be there. It's Sunday between 1:30 and 4:30, you know, this coming weekend. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? Is the, in the interest of transparency, is the Coalition for Better Government working on the UUT ballot measure that's being circulated?
No, not that I know of, no.
That's not you? That's not your group?
No. No, a ballot measure? No. The only issues that we are dealing right now and that were funded are the challenges with regard to the water transfer and the electrical transfers that have occurred. This is where most of our discussions are, in generally looking at the finances of the city, things about the bond measure, I mean, the indebtedness, things of this nature. But this is, we, this is a group that is primarily nonpartisan, you know, we are Republicans and Democrats in there, independents. So I cannot speak with any level of knowledge with regard to this particular initiative or measure, but the objective here is simply for members of the community to get a chance informally to talk to you about their issues and to.
So this is the group that's behind the lawsuit against the city?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so I will close this portion of oral communications. Let's move to the next item, please.
8, Action Items, 8A, Director of Human Resources Regarding Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 18. 8A1, Resolution Approving and Adopting the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Glendale and IBW Local 18 Commencing July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2019.
Ms. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening you have a four-year MOU, a Memorandum of Understanding, between the city and the IBW Local 18 before you for consideration and hopeful ratification. As the council is aware, the city and the IBW have been in negotiations for the past four-plus years, and as anyone can really imagine, four years is a long time to be negotiating with any group, and it hasn't been easy for both parties, so it is very nice for both parties to be here this evening. This evening, we bring to you the conclusion of a very long process, and as you all know, with negotiations comes compromise on both sides. And that's important to underline, compromise for both sides. This MOU before you is a good deal, and it's a good deal for the city, and I believe it's a good deal for IBW Local 18. Before Matt Doyle, our HR Director, gets into the deal points, some significant highlights of this MOU that I'd like to cover with you. You've all heard us talk ad nauseam regarding the adopted principles of compensation management here at the City of Glendale, and that we strive as a city to pay average market salary and really accept and expect exceptional service and performance by our employees, and it's average market, not above average, but it's striving to get to that average. And based on where we have been within the economy, and as everyone has experienced, we have fallen behind, and we are nowhere close to the average in this group. It's important to note that this group has not received a salary increase since 2008. They have actually received two pay reductions. In 2010, when they were part of the GCA, they received a 1.5% pay reduction, and in 2013, when they were within IBW, and when we imposed terms and conditions on this group, they received another 1.75% salary reduction. And it's important to note that we will be going out to certain benchmark positions to do a salary survey in years three and four of this contract, and we do know that currently, within certain positions, we are 10-plus, sometimes 12-plus percent out of whack. The other idea, and something that was very important to the city and to the city council, was cost sharing for the employer portion of PERS. And what this really means for us is this MOU really brings IBW in alignment with the rest of the organization, for them to pay the employer portion of that. Cost sharing and putting us in alignment with the rest of the bargaining groups is one that we talked about quite a bit and were able to get agreement on. And you know that Glendale has been the leader in pension reform since the inception of issues that we've been dealing with within this organization, and in comparison to other cities, we've done quite well, and we continue to be the leader in pension reform. Another significant item where we have agreement is the unblending of retiring medical rates. And as you know, this is necessary to address the city's OPEB liability of $214 million, of which is going up to $245 million. And ultimately, once we do have agreement from all of our bargaining groups, this liability will go from the $214 million to $20 million, and this is something that, again, is very important to us, and the IBW are the first to sign on with the city to say we are willing to unblend these rates and move forward with you hand in hand. Both parties have worked very, very hard on this agreement. I'd like to thank, you know, our team on the negotiating side, as well as the IBW team, and there are some folks here in the audience from IBW this evening. And I'd like to ask Mr. Doyle to talk to you a little bit about the deal points and specifics about the MOU, so that you have a better understanding, and we will answer any questions if you have any.
Hey, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Members of council, this item is a resolution adopting a four-year MOU with the IBW. This is quite a momentous occasion. This is our first collective bargaining agreement with this group since their inception, since their arrival here in 2011. As you know, the IBW represents the rank-and-file employees of our Glendale Water Department, our field operations, working out of our Utility Operations Center. They perform very, very important work, very hazardous work, and very skilled work, and we felt that it's very important to have a good agreement in place for many years from this point going forward. As Ms. Beers said, this, tonight's item represents the culmination of not just several months, but literally years of discussion, dialogue, sometime quite acrimonious, sometimes not, but the culmination of that process, which we believe, given the timing, the situation we're in relative to our finances, that this was the right time for this type of an agreement. As Ms. Beers said, this does contain both cost of living increases, as well as some salary inequity adjustments. And really, those are designed to bring our employees closer to their counterparts in the labor market average, as we're trying to do on a citywide basis. These cost of living increases, salary increases, we do feel are appropriate at this point. As Ms. Beers said, this group has not seen a salary increase of any sort since July 1st of 2008. That's seven years. As you know, the economy has gotten very, very challenging, the cost of living has gone up, but this has been, you know, many years since these employees have seen an increase. And again, as Ms. Beers has said, the employees were subject to salary reductions, both in 2010 and 2013. The details of the salary increases are quite simple. In the first year, they'll be receiving a 1% across-the-board cost of living increase. In addition to that, it would be a 3% salary increase, which would amount to a total of 4%. The 3% increase would be offset partially by cost sharing and the amount of 2.5%. In the second year of this contract, an additional salary step is being added to all of the classifications. So those employees who are at the top step of their current range would see a movement to an additional salary step, which would amount to approximately 5.5% increase for those employees. And then in years three and four, in order to ensure that we maintain in the same ballpark from a competitive standpoint, we're conducting salary surveys with our neighboring utilities and seeking to make a. and seeking to make adjustments based on how far behind our employees are as a result of that salary survey. Additionally, there are some specialty pay items of note, one involving water certifications for our employees that have certifications issued by the State of California Department of Health. This is very important, because, again, this goes to the skills, the knowledges that our employees have, that many of them have gone out and gotten particular licenses, licenses in water distribution, water treatment, beyond what they're required to have for their job. And we commend that, and we want to support that and incentivize that. So we are making adjustments for our water department employees who have those certifications. Additionally, those employees who have what's called 12KV rubber glove training, it's a very, very hazardous occupation that our electrical linemen do. It's a skill that is, that literally, they're putting their hands on live electric power lines. And for having that training, we're making a moderate adjustment to that particular skill pay. Additionally, we're seeing a standby pay, a modification in that. And the standby pay is what our employees receive when they're essentially on call for weekends, such as the last weekend that we had, where we had, you know, thunder, lightning, rainstorms. And having those employees available to take care of our system, to make sure it's reliable and that any damaged equipment that occurs gets repaired. We, I believe the council members were all aware of quite a bit of activity up in the north end of town. And our employees were out there in bucket trucks, out in the rain, and the lightning and the thunder, doing what it took to get our system back in order. And I believe we had some minor outages, but they were taken care of in a timely manner. Top of that, we have literally an entire MOU that we constructed. It contains various terms and conditions of employment. And one of the big items that our employees sought was advisory arbitration in our grievances. And that's a process of enabling, you know, when there's a disagreement between our employees and their management, enabling an outside entity to look at that very objective way and make a recommendation on which way that should go, that particular dispute. This was a key point. It's something that IBW is accustomed to having with their other employers. And after a great amount of discussion, we decided to grant that to them. On top of that, I believe Ms. Beers hit upon many of the things that the city wanted as far as our, you know, goals and objectives and priorities for this series of negotiations. She talked about the unblending of the retiree medical rates, a big, big items as far as saving the city costs, both now and that long-term OPEB liability of over $200 million. Additionally, we did obtain some degree, as previously mentioned, on cost sharing with the pension. The employees now will be paying an additional 2.5%, up to 3% for their PERS retirements. Additionally, there are some administrative things that we wanted to see occur, involving the date of our payroll and ultimately, movement of our payroll to a bi-weekly payroll system, which will assist us in meeting many of our goals for this Tier Two payroll project, as well as complying with the Fair Labor Standards Act. This agreement, as Ms. Beers said, we believe is fair, fair and very appropriate at this time. And I'm very pleased that after many, many years of trying, we're finally to a point where we're ready to recommend adoption of this agreement. As the council is aware, this item, there's two steps to approval of an MOU. One is adoption or ratification by the bargaining group, and the other is, of course, approval and adoption by the council. This tentative agreement, which was reached, was put before our members of the IBW. They have a very thorough process for making sure that it gets addressed and voted upon by all their members. And it was adopted, as we're told overwhelmingly. And it is now in the hands of the Glendale City Council. So with that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. And with that, our recommendation would be to adopt this MOU.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? I do have a card from the public. Let's hear that. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. The International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 18, approved a four-year contract with the city. Union workers would make a small increase in their pension contributions and, in exchange, receive a pay raises and a cost of living allowance. The contract will cost the taxpayers an additional $6.1 million, an increase our already unfunded pension liability of $1.4 billion, money which we do not have and could instead be used for traffic calming, law enforcement, roads, parks, libraries, public transportation, senior programs, et cetera. IBW workers should receive the same salaries as private industry, like Southern California Edison and PG&E. And government pension should be exchanged for Social Security and a 401K plan. When Social Security recipients max out at about $30,000 annually, and we have government employees receiving 60%, 75%, and 90% of their last year's salaries as a lifetime pension at age 50 or 55, the system is broken and needs to be changed. As expected by pension watchers, the previous week, CalPERS only earned 2.4% on their investments for the past fiscal year, not the required 7.5%. Therefore, Glendale taxpayers will be on the hook, contributing an additional 5.1% for this corrupt and irresponsible pension system. Tonight, Assistant City Manager Yasmin Spears will tell the public we have unfunded $214 million luxury post-employment health insurance liability, under control, but not terminated, knowing that bankrupt cities like San Bernardino and Santa Ana terminated their post-employment health insurance program, a premium medical program in which city employees enjoy until Medicare kicks in at age 65. Going forward, all new city employees should be on Social Security and 401K plan, like 90% of the American workforce. Government employee retirement should not be at age 50 or 55, but the same as in private industry. Only cities that belong to CalPERS like Glendale have had to file for bankruptcy protection. Many voters thought council members Divine, Garpatian, and Sanyanian were going to be different than the previous council members they replaced, and who gave generous salaries and pensions to our CalPERS employees. Unfortunately, they have not been any different. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this. So are there any comments by council before we put this for a vote?
I'll make a few comments.
Ms. Friedman?
So, just to respond to Mr. Mohill's concerns, and I thank him for bringing those to us, I just want to point out for the public a few things. He mentioned the OPEB and about cities terminating generous post-retirement benefits and wonderful medical plans. The city doesn't have post-retirement medical offer to their employees. The employees here, when they retire, don't get medical benefits. What they did get, what they do get is they have, they are able to stay in our group plan if they pay. So they have to pay for that. Now, because we blend the rates, that does cost the city something. But it's worth pointing out that this particular contract is the first contract in the first group to deal with that head-on. And they have given a concession of unblending for their group, which will save us quite a bit of money over time, about $20 million. So it's the first step in dealing with the problem of those post-retirement benefits that Mr. Mohill brings up. It's also worth pointing out, again, I think it was stated, that this group, I don't know why you're walking up to the podium, Mr. Mohill-
Have a seat, Mr. Mohill.
Can you please sit down? Thank you. That this group received a pay reduction, a forced pay reduction of 1.5% in 2010, and another 1.75% in 2013. So they haven't been getting generous raises over the years. In fact, they've been going backwards. And this has been a situation that is, been a difficult situation for, at least for me personally, I think, and a lot on council. And I'm so glad that we've been able to come to an agreement with this particular group of employees. They are a very hard-working group. Mr. Mohill asserts that they're paid so much more than the private sector like Edison. I don't know that that's the case. Show me. What are they being paid in private, in Edison? And what are their benefits there? Because I believe that they're pretty comparable to what they are getting in the public sector. But these are highly skilled employees who are working in a very dangerous job. In fact, just last weekend, I got a photo of some of these men up on top of a power line in a lightning storm with live electricity fixing the wires. So these are not unskilled, it's not unskilled labor. They're people who perform an important function. And it's been a difficult four years with this group since they've come here. And they have made a lot of motion, from where they were four years ago to now. We have cost sharing that we didn't have a few years ago, which is very important for us to deal with our liabilities and to deal with our CalPERS costs. This group is now taking on a percent, a portion of those pension payments, so that they're paying that out of pocket, so it's not coming out of the pockets of the taxpayers. And that's very important to know. So when you do a negotiation, you know, both sides give something up. I think everyone in the, you know, people in the city might want something even stronger and then certainly know that they wanted more. But they've come a long way, and we've come, you know, a certain way as well. And I think that it's a real accomplishment that we've been able to strike this deal. And I'm glad to hear that they overwhelmingly approved it. I, you know, hope that they understand that they are appreciated and they are being recognized. And I think going forward after the four years, I think we're going to start out with a good negotiation, and hopefully, it'll be quick and easy, and everyone will be a little bit unhappy and a little bit happy, which is where I think everyone is right now. So I want to, I know there's some representatives here, and I want to thank you for making this possible. Almost since I've been on council, this is, we've been at war with this group, and I think hopefully, that's over with. Okay, so, thanks, guys.
Ask me a question, Mrs. Friedman?
No, there was no question pending. Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garpatian.
Yes, I, if you don't ask any questions here today, it doesn't mean that we don't have questions. We've been going back and forth over these items, many sleepless nights for me to come up with a decision. I got elected three months ago. They've been negotiating for four years. So for me, it was looking at the numbers, because I was not in war with them. I don't know many of them. I'm looking forward to get to know as many of them as possible. But I looked at the numbers, and I'll tell you what my reasons are very briefly for voting this item and justify my decision, basically. No raise since 2008, that's seven years. Just keep that in the back of your mind. 2010, 1.5% pay cut. 2013, 1.75% pay cut. Now we are giving them a 4% and 5.5%. That's 9.5% within the first two years. Then on the third year or fourth year, they may get another 2% if they qualify. Even if they do, that's 11.5%. By adding up the 1.5% pay cut, 1.75% pay cut, and 2.5% increase in cost sharing, I did all the numbers. If you put all the increases together and deduct the pay cuts, it's about 6% increase in total. And my understanding was they were 10% below market. With this increase, they will still be below market. So not including the unblending of the OPEB and getting rid of, helping us to get rid of that $240 million liability, that is going to increase in next five, eight, 10, 20 years if we don't do anything about it. And we have to book it in 2017, book it against our assets. In 2017, I believe it will be about $240 or $250 million, if I'm not mistaken, something in that range. And even when they didn't have a contract, they did not strike. They did not go back. They responded to all the calls when there were storms. And that's the reason I'm voting for this. Because it's not because I want to give everything they want to them because they're my cousins, but because it has to be fair on both sides. And these are the reasons that I'm, and last week, all the storms that we had, who was up there? They didn't have the contract, they could have. And there is a no-strike clause in this contract as well, which is very important to us. So all this reason, I think, I'm going over everything else that was said, but I wanted to mention, because I was elected three months ago, these are the reasons that I'm voting for this item. And I stop here, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for letting me address this issue.
Fine.
Well, I won't belabor the point, because all the comments that have been made, I agree with. As Ms. Beers said, that negotiations mean compromise. Not everybody's going to be happy with every item that's in this agreement. Hopefully, most of us will be, and most of you will be. And I want to thank all of the IBW members that had anything to do with this, coming to an agreement and working with our staff, who I know, I haven't been here for four years either, but I do appreciate the fact that this is happening and everyone is in agreement on this contract. And I want to speak firsthand, because I was in North Glendale on Saturday. I was up in Montrose during that pouring-down rain and lightning storm. And I did see all of you men out there working. And I immediately emailed Mr. Zern and said, "Is this IBW out there?" And he said, "Absolutely." And I said, "Good for them." So I will vote, of course, to approve this agreement. And I just hope that you will continue to work as hard as you have been in the last few years before this contract, and we will continue to count on you in times of need. So with that, in my comments.
Thank you. I will, I'll be brief also. I've been here the longest, so I perhaps have lived through this, and I will take ownership of this. I was there when IBW first made their request to represent the workers at GWP. And that was maybe about four, five years ago, when Jim Starbird was the city manager. It wasn't easy to impose on this group twice, because I know that they are hard-working gentlemen and ladies who are dedicated to the city. I'm very pleased that we do have an agreement, finally. And we've struggled for this, to the extent of going down to the union headquarters with Frank Quintero, myself, and I believe Scott Ochoa, when he was just a newly minted city manager for Glendale. And we had very frank, face-to-face discussions with Brian Darcy, the famous Brian Darcy. He is a strong representative of the union. If anyone comes away from a negotiation saying that it was a great deal, then it wasn't a proper negotiation. I don't think any side is walking away saying, "What a great deal we got." But I think both sides are walking away saying, "This was an acceptable deal. It was a good deal." And I think that's truly what it was. And there is no other group of workers that I would, and I was in, I went through Montrose too, but I wasn't that quick with the camera, as you were, Ms. Divine. But I knew those were the workers up there working. And it brought to my mind the poor folks of Long Beach, who were served by Edison and who suffered up to 72 hours of blackout in their city, with all the ensuing difficulties, the spoiled food, the security issues. And there's no other group of workers that I would trade for RGWP members. Now, I don't want to show too much love, because we do, we are on other sides, we have to keep an arm's length, negotiations at all times. But I am, I'm pleased that, I'm pleased for the residents of Glendale, and I'm pleased for the working group at GWP, that we are able to put this before the council. Large thanks to both your representatives, Martin Malouf and, is it Malouf?
Marufo.
Marufo and Gus Corona. I know they put in some long hours. I know they put in some long hours. And there were frustrations, as well as our negotiating team, and we had several. We had Matt and who else did we have? Michelle, Yasmin, Scott Ochoa would...
Not on the negotiating team.
We kept him out of it. Maybe that was a good thing.
Brown as our outside counsel.
Kudos to everyone that put in the hard work to make this a possibility and put before us today for a vote. So would someone like to move this?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbadian?
Sinanian.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Congratulations, everyone. Next item, please.
8B, Director of Public Works Regarding As-Needed Support of Andover Building Automation System for the City of Glendale. 8B1, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Awarding a Contract to Schneider Electric Buildings Americas, Inc. for As-Needed Support of Andover Building Automation System for the City of Glendale in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for five years.
Ms. Spears. I mean, is it Spears or Beers?
Spears or Beers. Britney Spears, Yasmin Beers, whatever works, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to go to Public Works Director Rubik Galanian for a quick overview.
Ms. Spears, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in 2001, almost 15 years ago, we first introduced the Andover HVAC digital, that's heating, ventilation, and air conditioning automated system into the city. And since then, we have expanded to several major city facilities, including the Civic Center, some libraries, and the fire station. And this was to help us on our energy-saving efforts. And since then also, we have included lighting and secured access control as part of the software and the system. In April, we staff released a request for proposal to hire an Andover service contractor for support services. And during the evaluation process, staff found out that Schneider Electric, which is incidentally the parent company of Andover, is currently the only contractor, only company that can provide the support services for this original Andover software and the system. Since 2001, we have invested over $3 million in the system. It's been upgraded several times, and to switch it over to a new system will be extremely costly. Due to the sole-source situation that Schneider has created, they have agreed to provide a deep discount for the services, which includes 32 percent discount off labor costs and 62 percent of the material cost. We are requesting your authorization to enter into contract with Schneider Electric for five years at $100,000 amount on an annual basis. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to, I have a question. Did they do this building? Because it's always so cold up here.
This building is part of the Andover system, yes.
Okay.
Well, add the contact because cold is good.
Any other questions? If not, someone like to move it?
I'll move the item.
Fine. Is there a second? Let's have roll call.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbadian?
Yes.
Sinanian? And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
8C, Fire Chief Regarding Replacement of Two Existing Fire Engines, Triple Combination Pumpers, and Request to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize the Purchase of Approved Fire Apparatus in Service from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. on a Sole-Source Basis. 8C1, Resolution to Dispense with Competitive Bidding and Authorize Purchase of Two Engines from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. in the Amount of $1,445,000.
Thank you. Ms. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, since our interim fire chief made his way up to the podium, we're going to have to let him speak. So, Greg, please take it away.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it is time for us to replace two triple-combination pumpers, or otherwise known as fire engines. These engines are worn out. They've served the city well through strike teams, medical incidents, fires, and it's time to see their service life end. So with that, we want to recommend between the Fleet Services Division and the Fire Department to replace them with the apparatus of choice, and the apparatus of choice is manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing. Pierce, without question, has the best quality. If you compare any apparatus manufacturer like KME or Seagrave to a Pierce, you can't even compare the quality. The quality is second to none out of a Pierce. The craftsmanship and just the pride that goes into manufacturing these apparatus is second to none. So with that, we're going to, we're asking to replace two of our engines with Pierce and have it as a sole source. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Garbitchian?
Chief, I was briefed on this item, and I want to ask this question so the public would know why Pierce Manufacturing, why that brand? Because I think it's important, if you're going single-source, it's important for public to know why is it that we're choosing one brand versus another.
Very good question, Mr. Garbitchian. So one of the things that we're really concerned about is the parts that we get. The parts that we get within our warehouse can very easily be applied to our Pierce apparatus. The second thing is, we don't have to retrain our mechanical staff on how to operate on another apparatus. They can quickly adapt themselves to these new fire engines, make themselves, it's much easier for them to operate on one of these things. And most importantly is the quality, like we talked about. The other manufacturers out there last about 10 to 15 years. The Pierce quality apparatus that we get are lasting 15 to 20 years. 15 as a frontline engine and five years in reserve for a total of 20.
Thank you. If there are no questions, I have a card submitted by Mike Mohill. Three minutes, Mr. Mohill.
Mayor Najarian and council member, his name is Mike Mohill. I'm not criticizing that we need equipment from the Fire Department. My question is, can we get it cheaper? If we belong to LA County, their buying power is 1,000 percent stronger than Little Glendale that has less than 200,000 people. You know how many hundreds of pieces of equipment they order all year round? If we belong to the county, LA County Fire Department, where their services are approximately 25 percent less than a CalPERS comparable fire department for Glendale. Remember that, folks. That's why it costs us so much money for our services, because we belong to CalPERS. Thank you.
Chief, I'm going to extrapolate the comment of Mr. Mohill and turn it a different way. Would we get a better deal if we submitted our purchase orders with the county or any other large agency or authority?
Mr. Mayor, yes. That would be the case if we had the exact same spec. But the fact is, we don't have the same spec. Our specification is designed specifically for Glendale, and it, within the community that we serve, it's the best apparatus that we can possibly give to the community. So our specification is completely different than the County of Los Angeles and the City of Los Angeles. So we would, as much as we would love to be part of that buying power, it just doesn't, it simply doesn't work for us.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Garbitchian?
Yes, before we move this item, Mr. Mayor, I have a request or a suggestion. After we purchase these trucks, maybe we can donate our older trucks to Republic of Armenia. Because we have two sister cities that are in a need of trucks like this. They may be retired here and very old to us, but in many parts of the world, these trucks will still work another 10, 15, 20 years. And also, there are other parts of Republic of Armenia, also the Arts of Harabakh, that are in need of trucks like this. So I make a request to, if possible, start the process after we purchase these trucks to donate these trucks to Republic of Armenia.
Absolutely.
And the only caveat I would add is that the transportation, and the city was generous enough through your help, Chief, to donate two ambulances. The transportation cost per ambulance was about $11,000 or $12,000. Let's see, let us either through our staff find out what the transportation cost would be for those rather large vehicles. And if prohibitive, let's see if there's any other sister cities that we could help out with that. I know we have Rosarita Beach close by.
Mr. Mayor, I will take a lead on doing the research on the transportation and have some fundraising if we have to, to raise the money to...
Are they serviceable? I read something about the tanks leaking with...
The tanks are rusted out, but yeah, they're definitely serviceable for, I mean, they're just in the same condition as the ambulances were. Are they still functioning? Absolutely, they're functioning.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Devine?
Yeah. Can I ask, what usually happens to these fire trucks once you retire them? Do we sell them or are they junked?
We have sold them in the past. We usually don't sell them. We haven't sold them recently. We usually donate them. If they're in better shape, we can donate them to the community college because we have a, they have an academy up at the Verdugo Fire Academy at Glendale Community College. And then, of course, yes, we have donated equipment to Rosarita Beach Fire Department in the past in our sister cities as well.
In Armenia as well, right? You have done...
I don't know if we've ever donated a fire engine to Armenia. So this would be a first, and I'm definitely excited to pursue that.
Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
8C1. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garbadian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian? Sinanian, Mayor Najarian?
Yes. 8D, please.
8D, Director of Public Works and Community Services in Parks Regarding Glendale Narrow River Walk Phase 2 and Bike Way Culvert Project, specification number 3574. 8D1, Motion Awarding a Construction Contract to Powell Constructions, Inc. in the Amount of $1,844,426.50 and Rejecting All Other Bids.
Okay. 82 is a resolution of appropriation. Ms. Spears?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I will let Jester Ann, our Director of Community Services and Parks, get into the presentation. And we do have a short presentation for you. And we thought as part of this agenda report that we would also bring to you background and history on development impact fees, because we've talked about it quite a bit, and we are asking for appropriation of development impact fees for this project. And we thought it would be a good time to give you a little bit of history and background to also let you know how much money we have, you know, in that account and what our plan is as it relates to those monies coming forward with council approval. So with that, I'll go to Jester Ann.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, we were here last on May 5th, my partner, Mr. Galanian, and I, to request approval of the plans and specifications and a brief review of the Riverwalk Phase 2 project. And council approved plans and specs. We went out to bid, and we are now requesting approval of the award of contract. To start off, this is a graphic of the Riverwalk Phase 1 project, which is reflected by the yellow line, and then Phase 2 is represented by the green color. Phase 2 involves a park at Flower Street and development of another park called Confluence Park at the confluence between the Wash and the LA River. The Phase 2 project, one of the prominent features is that it also includes construction of a culvert bridge, which will, in fact, connect the Phase 1 pedestrian path and bike way path to the Phase 2 bike way path and pedestrian path. And when completed, will provide a one-mile pathway along the river, which also happens to represent the city's, the only area in City Glendale that bounds the LA River. As part of our recommendation, we are requesting an appropriation of $590,000 in development impact fee funds, which we refer to as DIF funds. In addition to $201,000 in Measure R funds and $100,000 in tax gas, I'm sorry, gas tax funds. So we do want to take this opportunity to highlight the current status of our development impact fee fund portfolio. So in terms of background pursuant to California Government Code, Section 66477, and AB 1600 of the Quimby Act and Mitigation Fee Act, in 2007, the city council did adopt Ordinance Number 5575, which authorized the collection of parks and library development impact fees from new commercial, office, industrial, and residential development in the City of Glendale. In 2014, the city council approved increasing the fees for multifamily residential developments from $7,000 to $18,751 per unit, and for commercial developments from $2.67 a square foot to $6.50 a square foot, and for office development from $3.26 a square foot to $7.92 per square foot. Also, 10 percent of the fees collected go towards libraries, and 90 percent go towards As of June 30, 2015, the city has collected $15 million in parks DIF fees. To date, the city has appropriated $11 million in DIF revenues towards park projects. So the current unprogrammed balance in DIF revenues today is $4 million. Now, prior to fiscal year 1450, the year that just ended, in which we were able to collect $8 million, the city was averaging only between $1 to $2 million per year in DIF revenues. So a DIF strategy is more timely now than ever, since we will be collecting significant amounts in the year that just ended and in the year that just started. For example, for fiscal year 1516, based on the number of applications for development projects, staff is estimating an additional $12 million in DIF revenues for a total unprogrammed balance of $16 million. So this does pose a unique opportunity. I would also like to note that typically, staff does not program DIF funds until after the funds are collected. In terms of the eligibility of mitigation DIF funds, funds are eligible to be used to fund new park developments or newer expanded recreational opportunities or new park features in existing parks or new amenities. These funds are not eligible for rehabilitation or repair projects. Also, generally, there should be some nexus to the geographic areas where units are being added and where the population is increasing, which thus impacts the need for more parks and recreational services. However, if a park is not necessarily in geographic areas of where units were added or fees collected, then the project should benefit all residents and serve as a citywide or regional draw, such as Duke Magen Wilderness Park and Riverwalk as prime examples. In terms of completed projects to date with DIF funds, the first project completed was the ARRC, where we used the first increment of $310,000 for that project, and that was in 2010. We used $660,000 of DIF funds for the Pacific Park Pool in 2011. And then we used funding for the Pacific Park Wayfinding Project, the Maple Park Improvement Project, and the Verdigo Adobe Restroom Renovation. These are all completed projects where we have appropriated DIF funds. In terms of current projects appropriated with DIF funds and what our current strategy has been, we have been using DIF funds to complete ongoing commitments, which are projects that were started years ago, but now need more funding in order to complete those projects. And again, a prime example is the Duke Magen Wilderness Park Nature Center, where we have appropriated $2.5 million in DIF funds in order to be able to complete, to finally complete development of that nature center, which is based on an original master plan for the Duke Magen Wilderness Park, which was completed in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1992 was the approval of that master plan. And so the adaptive reuse of the barn would be the last phase to complete that master plan. Riverwalk is another example, Phase 1 and 2. We have a current appropriation of $150,000 in DIF funds. And again, the original Glendale Narrows Riverwalk... And again, the original Glendale Narrows Riverwalk Conceptual Master Plan was completed in 2003. So we're using these funds to complete those master plans and the original visions of the City Council from years back. Two more examples, the Glendale High School Tennis Court Project. We've appropriated $350,000, and this is a project where...which results from a required mitigation measure from the redevelopment of the Adult Recreation Center. So we're trying to complete that project with these funds. And the other premise is that there are no other funding sources available to us in order to be able to complete these projects, especially with the recession, where the availability of CIP funds were practically down to zero in the last couple of years. So because of DIF funds, we are able to still have a funding source appropriate to these projects to be able to get them done. Then the last example under this category of strategy is the sports complex batting cages, where we're appropriating $400,000. And again, the batting cage component was part of the original master plan of the sports complex. This will allow us to complete the original vision of the sports complex master plan. We're using DIF funds for current park projects that are in the planning and design phase in southern or near central Glendale, and these projects are very recent, so you are familiar with them. Palmer Park, for example, we appropriated $1.1 million to be able to complete that project, leveraged with CDBG funds and some state grant funds. The Fremont Park Improvement Project, which is currently in the development of a master plan phase, where the City Council, you have already approved an appropriation of $2.15 million for that project. And then the Central Park Master Plan, we have $150,000 appropriated, and that's just for the master planning. That would not include any proposed improvements that will come out of that master planning We have been using DIF funds for current park projects in the planning and design phase with a regional draw that benefits all residents. Again, this is part of our current strategy for the use of DIF funds. For example, the Brand Park Wayfinding Project, where with the renovated library and the open space is indeed a regional draw, which would make these funds eligible, and we've appropriated $122,000 in DIF funds. The Brand Park Lighting Project, we are planning to completely reassess and redesign the lighting system at Brand Park. And again, especially with the advent and opening of the newly renovated Brand Library and a lot more nighttime activities, the need for a new lighting system has really popped out, so we are using DIF funds, leveraged with $750,000 in public works funds, to be able to complete that project, that badly needed project. And then, as part of the 1516 budget, the City Council also approved a $500,000 appropriation for the Verdugo Park Committee Building and Restrooms. Again, Verdugo Park as a regional park and a regional draw that will benefit all residents, including the new residents moving into Glendale. And Stengel Field, we appropriated $605,000 in DIF funds in order to demolish a park amenity which had been condemned, so for practical purpose did not exist, and without the demolition would not be an amenity available to the public, so we appropriated DIF funds for that project as well. In terms of future planning, after fiscal year 1516, after the current fiscal year, again, staff estimates that DIF revenues will significantly reduce, probably down to the previous levels that we were seeing prior to last fiscal year, between $1 and $2 million per year, as a result of a reduction in housing and commercial development in the city. So assuming that the city is near to getting built out, this funding source will begin to dry up. Current Community Service and Parks projects, we anticipate will need additional appropriation of DIF funds. Tonight, we are requesting $600 or $590,000 to complete the Riverwalk Phase Two project and get that project done, and get us in a position to plan for Phase Three. And we are happy to report that we have received a...on a preliminary basis, a recommendation to receive a $3 million grant in metro call for project funding. So we do have our first increment of $3 million to use towards Phase Three, which is the bridges connecting Phase Two to Atwater and/or Griffith Park. Then we anticipate needing $500,000 more for the Duke Magen Barn or Educational Center project in order to build a restroom building that is a requirement of our building permit to be able to open up the barn for a public use and a public venue. Then depending on what the City Council wants to do with Central Park, once we're able to develop a master plan and present that master plan to the City Council, again, DIF would be an ideal funding source for any improvements that would be associated with Central Park. So in terms of the strategy for future parks, even with all the funds already appropriated by this City Council and the complete projects that were begun by this City Council or previous City Councils, we still have $14 million, $14.9 million that we are anticipating. $4 million already in the bank, if you will, and the balance coming to the city by the end of the current fiscal year. So in terms of strategy, the funding could be used towards new park developments, either city parks involving acquisition of new properties and complete development of brand-new parks, or partnering with the Glendale Unified School District, and focusing on properties that they own under a partnership. We could pay for improvements or expansion and open up those properties for more recreational and park use. We can determine as part of strategy, or the City Council can determine, that part of it could be reserved for adding new features at existing parks or recreational facilities, or additional community priorities that the committee might help the City Council identify for the use, the future use of the DIF funds. So the next steps is to undertake a community outreach program and to submit a report to the City Council with the feedback received, with the types of projects that could be eligible and would be most ideal uses of development impact fee funds, including, for example, using the future increments of DIF funds to concentrate more on the areas where the developments are taking place, such as more central and southern Glendale. And so to receive input and direction from the City Council, and then development of a strategic plan for the use of DIF funds. So with that, the last slide is a recap and a summary of our current DIF portfolio. Again, total funds collected as of June 30th of 2015 was $15 million. Amount of DIF funds already appropriated to projects is $11 million, which leaves us a balance in our account right now of $4 million. We are expecting another $12 million in the current fiscal year, or by the end of the current fiscal year, bringing the total to $16 million. If we subtract additional appropriations that we will need for to complete Duke Magen and Riverwalk, that's $1.1 million, which leaves us a balance of unprogrammed DIF funds of $14,900, would be part of the strategic plan. And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, that concludes this report. If you have any questions on the DIF portfolio, I'm happy to answer questions. If you have questions about the project, Mr. Galanian and his staff are available to answer more questions.
Ms. Friedman.
I have a question.
I just wanted to say, I apologize, Councilwoman Friedman. I'm getting nudged by our city attorney from across the dais, saying that although good and well that we gave a historical, you know, perspective and background on our development impact fees, the agenda before you this evening is on Phase Two of the Glendale Narrows Riverwalk, and so please keep your comments to that, and the rest of it is just information only. And if need be, we will agendize this specific item at a later date and bring the DIF revenues and appropriations...
Let me just add, if you want, obviously if you have discussions on what Mr. Duran just presented, I think that's fine, but we can have a discussion about the sort of the priorities that were laid out in the presentation or specific projects...
None of the future programming issues or anything like that.
Correct, correct. That would have to come back if the council wants to have a discussion on that, but some of those particular points, we could certainly bring that back.
So just the Riverwalk?
Right.
And yeah, and if you have questions about it, I think that's fair game too, so you can get at the background, but...
And anything in the future, we would be bringing back to you anyway, for items that have not been appropriated, but just to make sure we're on...
I think you could see in our eyes that we were already spending the money, weren't you? Couldn't you? Yeah, we were. Okay.
Ms. Friedman.
I have a question, Mr. Galanian. Can you go back to the map, the...well, it's not really a map, the...
Riverwalk.
The bird's-eye-view map, I guess it is, in the second slide.
Of Riverwalk.
There you go. What are the red arrows indicating?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Friedman, if you recall the presentation that we made previously prior to advertising this project for bids, this is the future bridge location...
Okay, so those are the potential bridge locations.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so then, if you were going to do the northern bridge, you would still want to do this particular part of path to bring residents who might be coming, where would they tie in, though? It looks here like a dead end, so what's the idea? Would you still do both bridges, or just one?
Councilmember Friedman, depending on the funding that we received, and we have applied in addition to what Mr. Duran mentioned, metro call for projects, we have applied for federal grants, and we are also seeking various states and federal funding. As you may recall, the price tag on that bridge was quite substantial. But in order to have that bridge in place, you are absolutely correct, that dead-end street or location needs to be opened up to facilitate a pathway to the start of the bridge whenever it happens.
But that would only be for the bridge that's in the south? If you were only going to do the bridge in the north, you wouldn't need to do this section, right?
This will be for both bridge locations.
So in other words, you're saying that you were gonna...we will do two bridges if we do anything? We're not going to just do one or the other?
Correct. Depending on the funding we receive, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, depending on funding, that's different.
Right.
So but is there a possibility you would only do the northern bridge?
That is quite possible, yes.
So if that's possible, is this a waste, then, to do this bridge? Because it's kind of going behind a power plant, it's not a particularly scenic route, to do the rest of this path?
Let me trace it back, then. The goal is to do both bridges, and we will not stop once we get the funding to do either or.
Okay, so eventually, even if we can only do one now, the plan is at some point done...
Absolutely.
Okay, that makes sense.
And we are working with metro staff. Once the Doran Crossing Project comes along, we are in negotiation with them and see if there is a joint project we can do together at that location.
Maybe high-speed rail? I mean, couldn't we make an argument that we need this because of high-speed rail?
We will certainly make the argument.
No, I mean, as you know, I've been following and advocating for this project, you know, since I've been on council and talked to Adam Schiff, our congressman, about it, and he's very...every time I see him practically, he says, "How are we doing with the bridge and the Riverwalk project?" And I say, "Well, you're the one that's supposed to pay for it, so you tell us." But...
Actually, this was quite a milestone, $3 million in metro call for projects.
Yeah, that's great. It's wonderful, and I hope...
It was great work. It was great work to get that at metro, because there were a lot of cities...it was a very competitive process, and I won't tell you how it happened.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. If you were the leading force in that, which I'm sure you were, it's a great coup for us. So I know that we're not talking about the development impact fees, and, just because it's timely, maybe we can bring back a discussion about something I read in the newspaper today about GUSD selling their site across the street, which is in a very dense area next to our civic center, and we've lamented not having big areas for parkland, and that's almost an acre, I think, or maybe it's a little under, three-quarters of an acre. That could be a terrific park. So I would ask that maybe the city start maybe having that conversation and seeing if that's a possibility before it's sold by them to be housing for a developer. So I know we're not having that discussion, but I'm just asking that we bring that back soon, because it sounds like they're about ready to sign on the dotted line, and first I heard about it, so would love to find out if that could be a park for us.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Garbetyan.
Going back to Councilmember Friedman's question, if we build two bridges, I want to know, why would we build two? Also, when do you think realistically it will happen? Because this path is going to go dead end right now, and until those bridges are built, what is the point of having this path, when you can go all the way to the end for maybe less than half a mile and come back?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Garbetyan, I'm going to ask Mr. John Merkler, who's worked closely with City of LA and the LA revitalization, folks who has a better idea of the timing and the sequence of the way it works. So John, if you can expand on that, please.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, staff, my name is John Merkler. I'm with Atkins, and actually, this is the third time I'm here, and I'm very happy to be here. We're the project managers for this very unique park project. To give you a little bit of background, the project is for two parks, was grant-funded with two revenue streams, and we were to look at linking at the Flower Plaza location, Phase One, to Phase Two. Phase Two is partially in place already, which is a bike path that goes halfway down to where Confluence Park is now. The grand idea was to create both of these park locations, and we were working in conjunction with Phase Three planning. Phase Three is the summation of a previous master plan that was completed after a course of about approximately 10 years for a regional basis to bring and tie the region into the Glendale or into the Griffith Park area, crossing in a number of locations. At that point, at the end of that master plan process, there were approximately five locations that were identified as potential bridge locations from the Confluence Park all the way across almost to the Riverside Bridge, and with the notion that there was a multiple crossings, one of which was also perhaps equestrian, and then the rest were bicycle and pedestrians. And in the process, we developed with city staff, we worked with Phase Two, which includes the development of the two parks, along with a location and the community involvement with the bridge locations. And there were, at the end of the bridge, a Phase Three process, we completed three outreach sessions. We identified two locations for bridges that was...that were the culmination of the comments from the community. The first location was tying Confluence Park to At...north Atwater at that location, and also a central location, and that was chosen to be at Flower Plaza. So at that point, we completed both in...at one time, both the Phase Three planning and the Phase Two design work and the landscape process for the two parks, which were mandated by the grant money.
When you say Flower Plaza, what do you mean by that?
That's the name we gave to the location where the...
Little park is?
The park is, that would also be the future location that would accommodate the pedestrian bicycle bridge across to Griffith Park.
So, Mr. Garbetyan, it's where Flower Street ends, and then...
I can see when it says Flower Plaza. I was there this morning, I wanted to basically know what I'm talking about or what I'm asking. There are two little parks over there that has one picnic table with no, basically, no shade area, no...
Right.
Landscaping, it's just tawdered right now.
And currently, they're not connected. And so, as part of our charge with the Phase Two work, we were to look at how we could connect the Phase One, which is existing, which you had seen, to Phase Two, which is a bike path. And right now, there is a LA County culvert that happens to split that, and you now currently have to walk around into the street to get around to the southern part. And part of our design work is to link the two... And part of our design work is to link the two sides together and also accommodate a potential bridge. And that's what you see on the diagram, is the Flower Plaza location.
Is it, can I ask, is that, is the Flower Plaza across the street and on that corner? Flower Plaza?
The Flower, what we're calling Flower Plaza is where councilman was at, the current seating, the current end of the park, and then also on the opposite side across the culvert, and a whole extension of that now would be creating one area with a culvert crossing. So, the bridge, the pedestrian bicycle bridge would cross that culvert and tie both sides together.
Councilmember Arpetian, I'm sorry, to answer the last part of your question about timing, the Metro grant that we have gotten approval for is for five years out, so it is our hope and expectation that we'll be able to obtain additional grants to five years and be able to build at least one or both of these bridges.
And one, if, let's say you can, you have grants to build one bridge, which one would you build first?
That's a very, I think, it depends. It basically depends on the amount of the grant funding we achieve. The LA River Bridge is the more expensive of the two bridges.
And again... The Flower Plaza, you would build Flower Plaza Bridge first?
The bridge that would be located at Flower Plaza. And let me explain a little bit, both parks include grading to accommodate the future bridges at this particular point.
No, I understand, but if you have funding within five or six or seven years, if you have grant funding for one bridge, we will build the first one on the map, on the, to the left, which is Flower Plaza.
That is correct, Councilmember Arpetian.
So, the rest of this path would be kind of just a dead-end path that you can go and come back, or ride your bike for a quarter of a mile.
Until such time that we build...
Until such time that the next bridge may be comeback. So, my question is, would it be wise to wait until we have the ground funding for one of these bridges or two of them, and then build this thing, so all of them will tie together at that time?
Councilman Arpetian, the Prop 84 funding that we have received has a sunset date, so we need to expand it by March of 2016. So, if we don't go...
You will lose that grant money.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because when we say grant-funded, so far, we put $200,000 of our development impact fees in there, plus $600,000 today, it's $800,000, so it's not all grant-funded. We are basically funding some of the, some of the cost.
You are correct, Councilman Arpetian, but we also received just under $1 million worth of Prop 84 state grant funds.
No, I understand, I understand. And when they said it's grant-funded, it's not all grant-funded, we are coughing up rest of the funds. I'm, listen, I'm, okay, thank you, this is all I have right now, so.
Ms. Friedman?
Yeah, a couple more questions. First, a comment, which is, one of the complaint, people love Riverwalk, everybody likes it. But one of the complaints I've gotten is that there's not great signage leading to it, if you're biking down from, sorry?
So on it.
Okay, most people are okay with it. But Mr. Najarian just said he was so-so on it, just for the folks watching at home. So, people seem to generally, with the exception of Mr. Najarian, like the Riverwalk project. But people have complained that it's really bad signage, and when people are trying to find the entrances to it, when they're biking there from other parts of Glendale, they can't find it. So, I'm hoping, as we are doing things there, that we can really take a look at the signage, see where our cyclists are riding in from, how they're coming in, and give them a safe and easy way of biking into the area and into the correct places, so they're not wandering around, trying to find this narrow way to get in, and also know how to cross Glen Oaks, how to get there from different locations. I don't know, do we have a sign on Glen Oaks telling cyclists how to find Riverwalk?
Not currently, Councilmember Friedman.
Well, if you want people to use an amenity like this, you need to have signage to get people to it. So, I would say that should be our number, we should be doing that now, and we should have done that, you know, two years ago. And I've sent several emails, as you know, about this over the last year, so I'd like to see that done. Secondly, I know you mentioned equestrian. I don't know where the horses are coming from or going. I know there's horses in, you know, in the Rancho, but we don't allow them on the Riverwalk path. So, to spend money to do an equestrian bridge when we don't allow horses on the path doesn't make any sense to me.
Yes, and that's, we don't have equestrian. We, in the master planning process, we looked at five alternatives, and the one at Flower is purely pedestrian and bicyclists.
Okay, good to know. And also, there's nothing on the other side for equestrians. So, you know, you don't want to dump them onto that access road that goes to Zoo Drive, because it's dangerous enough for people on bicycles, on horses, it would really be bad. But my big concern with this is, and I know that you're looking, you know, you're watching this, and we don't really know what's going to happen, but the LA River revitalization plan, which I'm very much in support of, and Mayor Garcetti just announced that he got a couple billion dollars from the federal government, so it looks like this is...
They didn't get money, the engineers approved the concept of the project.
And money's to follow, I'm sure.
Right. And what are we, then, I don't think we should spend any money on this if we're getting 1.3 billion.
What I'm saying is, you know, we need to take a look at what they're doing, and in that scenario, I'm not, you know, maybe this, the bridge still works, because maybe there's a network of walk, elevated walkways and that sort of thing through the marshland, but I don't know. So, we need to at least, do they know that we're planning, what we're doing?
Yes, Councilmember Friedman, we have been in contact with them.
And are they designing around our plan, so that if we do make this investment and they are able to move forward, we're incorporated in?
We met with all of the stakeholders, including the LA River Revitalization Corps, the Bureau of Engineers, the Public Works, Dr. Carol Armstrong, Bureau of Engineering. We've had letters of recommendation for all of the agencies, we've had them participate in the workshops as well, and we've had nothing but positive comments. The Verdugo Wash Bridge would still land in Glendale, where we anticipate that happening, and it would accommodate future development or redevelopment and revitalization of the LA River to the south.
So, they told us that this bridge, the Confluence Park Bridge, would go, then, to something that would continue on the other side, to something that would be incorporated into their design?
We've met with Councilman Mitchell Farrell's office, and they've been very supportive of that process as well, and anticipate having an LA River extension on that side.
Okay, terrific, that's all I wanted to know, thank you. This is all very, very exciting, so I'm asking questions, because this is something that in five, 10 years, could be an incredible amenity for our community, it could really change the way we think of the LA River, and it could make it into something like we have at Duke Magin and Brand Park, where it's a place that people really do go to meet and have recreation and spend a day with their family. So, this is all baby steps, getting to what could be an incredible project, so thank you.
So, I have a couple, well, let me hear from the speaker first, and I'll give some comments. Mike Mohill. You can have a seat.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. Like I spoke last week here, again, 90% of all parks is grant-funded from federal, state, or the county. In this case, we're talking about Measure R funding. Measure R was a ballot measure in 2008 in LA County, a half sales tax increase for over the next 30 years, in order to pay transportation projects improvements. That included 35% for transit capital, 3% for MetroLink, 20% for highway capital improvement, 20% for bus operation improvement, 5% for rail, 2% for miscellaneous transit, and 15% local return. What is local return? That's transportation money that individual cities decide on how they're going to spend it. We decided to spend it on the Riverwalk. Now, it's nice to paint your house, but if your roof is leaking, why are you painting your house? In Glendale, since 2008, since the recession, we've had no money coming in for roads. Our capital improvements, our sales tax has been down for many years. And here, we're taking this 15% for Riverwalk. It's a nice thing, I'm for it. But why did we, in the first place, decide to go this route? Mrs. Friedman, you've been voting for this all along, and Mr. Najarian, these are nice projects, but why aren't we taking that 15% to fix our local roads? Go along Riverside Drive in the Rancho area. Cobblestone's there. Only three years ago, I got Glen Oaks Boulevard resurfaced, Kenyatta Boulevard, two years ago, resurfaced. We've got roads that are crumbling yet, we're going to go ahead and have a Riverwalk. Wow. That's what you call smart planning. Here, you had 15% was given to you according to Measure R, and you chose to have a nice park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have some concerns about this, several concerns. And I hate to say it, but I agree with Mr. Mohill in the use of the Measure R subregional funds. If, in fact, we're going to use those funds for bicycle amenities, I know that we have been very closely working with the Bicycle Coalition for other types of improvements throughout the city, improving our bikeways, bike lockers, bike share, and numerous others. I just don't think that many people are currently using or will use this particular park. As far as the bridge at Confluence Park goes, I've spoken to the mayor's office, Mayor Garcetti's office, and they are envisioning a swamp. They are envisioning breaking down the south levee of the Verdugo Wash and permitting the Verdugo Wash water to run and run freely and flow freely into the LA River, wiping out a lot of the Atwater Village area that we see there. I don't see how in any, in any sort of design, there's going to be a bridge that's going to be placed there. And if we're talking about an elevated bridge over the swamp, that is a budget that is far in excess of what we're looking at today. And I know this, because we were talking about creating a bridge over the LA River for safety purposes, to fix the Doran Street crossing. And as soon as we talked about something being constructed right in that area, you can see where the little cul-de-sac of Doran is, that's where the bridge was intended to cross over, and they didn't care about where it ended, they were caring about where it started. Don't get near our, it's not fair to call it a swamp, in our riparian habitat. Don't get involved in our riparian habitat, because that is going to be a soft sandy bottom, where there's going to be wildlife and fish and egrets and everything else there. So, to put any sort of budget or line item on that bridge, I think, I think is a huge mistake. Secondly, I have a problem in putting the, in funding this with the development impact fees that we obtained and that we received from the projects in the central city. The purpose of those fees is to provide recreation and library usage for the residents in those developments. I envision Central Park, I envision Palmer Park, I envision Fremont Park, I envision the Glendale High School tennis courts. I don't see how there's any nexus between the downtown development and this area here. And I'm also concerned that we've already spent, we had 15 million, Jess, and we've already, we've blown through 11 million of it. And when I was beating my fist on the table to get a decent-sized swimming pool in Pacific Park, I was met with roadblocks every single step of the way, and now we're putting in money that could have gone towards extending that pool to a decent-sized respectable municipal pool, which would serve the residents of the central area, which would serve the children of that area. I don't know how many kids are going to be able to get out here on this park. I think you've got very limited access, you've got very limited type of activity that you can do there. I don't want to get far afield, bottom line, I don't want to get far afield from the nexus between these huge developments that we see and that we complain about every day on Central, on Brand, on San Fernando, and spend the money here. I even have a, I mean, it's a hard nexus to make, to fund Duke Magin Park, oh, it's a regional park, oh, how's a kid that lives down here at the Lexus on Orange, or whatever they call that, Lexon Orange, how is that person going to get up to Duke Magin Park? And it's not fair to spend that money up there. They need the park facilities nearby, they need it in a walking distance to their residences, to those developments. And of course, we're not supposed to talk about this, but we imposed the appropriate fee on those developments way too late in the game. We'd be looking at about a 30 or 40 million dollar pot of money to expend on parks and libraries, had we imposed, and that's not, that's not my new colleague's problem, and partially...
Thank God.
Partially, Ms. Friedman was involved in that. But had we imposed it at the appropriate time, we wouldn't have had this problem, we'd have had a very robust parks and recreation capital project system. We wouldn't have to take our transportation money and say, "Well, there's going to be some bike usage in it." So, that's what really bothers me. And I know that's not what we're here to do, but I'll bring it back to the nexus. I have a hard time allocating $594,000 from our development impact fees to this park at this time, regardless of any sort of nexus. I'm glad Mr. Ochoa's not here, because we would get back into it again, like we used to in the good old days. And poor Hassan Ghani's not here, anyway. I was a little too hard on him, maybe, during this discussion. But I don't see the nexus, and I don't think it's appropriate, and I don't think, I don't think with clear conscience, I can allocate that sort of money, which I would like to see in the central part of the city, adjacent to all these mega developments, 4,000 units coming in, out here at the river. I'm not saying it's a bad project, I'm sure there's great use to it, but it should find its own funding, whether it's from the federal level, whether it's from county level, additional grants. I don't mind if Metro pays a little bit for that, you know. You know, we can go ahead and do that. Metro does allocate some of its funding for bicycles, but this is, this is put in the wrong place. This money is placed in the wrong, in the wrong location. We owe it to our residents to do things like Central Park, boost up Fremont Park, we're already spending it on Palmer Park and other little amenities. Put restrooms in those mini parks that we, that we have, that the seniors have to hold their bladders for four or five hours at a time, because there's no place to relieve themselves. That's where I want to see that money going, not to a park that has very poor access, limited access, for the people that live in those units. And that's the nexus, that's the connection here. Those units are paying that, because the parks are being impacted by their residents, not creating a new park far afield on the border with LA and Burbank.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Friedman.
So, first, I mean, I share your concern about the LA River project and the impact that's going to have on this. And it's a little disconcerting to me to hear staff say one thing, that, oh, everyone on that side is sort of on board with this and it'll fit in, and then Mr. Najarian to say, "No, I've spoken with them, and it's not going to fit in with their plans." So, I would like to, before I vote on this, maybe we can table it after our discussion, to actually get, maybe have one of them come in and talk to us, so that we can get some, I would feel better having some more clarity and having more input from them. Let me, let me continue. So, that's one thing. In terms of, you know, the history of the park impact fees, and, you know, we're all so horrible, you know, we can argue, fees were fine when they were raised, they could have been raised six months earlier, they could have been raised a year earlier, I don't, I think it's all beside the point. I do think talking about where the money should be spent is something that we should be thinking about. It seems to me, if this was just a park, I would agree with you, that the money should be spent closer to the more heavily impacted areas. But what makes this a little different is it's not just a park, it's a transportation area. There's a lot of people who live in South Glendale who commute into Los Angeles or into Hollywood, who could use, and a lot of those, some of those people don't have cars, and some of those people could certainly use this to cycle to work in downtown LA, if they could only get to the bike path on the other side. And the big impetus for this project, it's not just to create this little sliver along the LA River, that's not what this is about, it's to create a linkage to LA's robust network, the bike path that runs along the Los Angeles River, from Los Feliz through Atwater, and soon to be all the way to downtown Los Angeles. That's what this, to me, that's what this is really about. So, getting, giving those people a way to safely cycle to work is very important. And if you don't think people are cycling right now to and from Glendale to Hollywood and Los Angeles, you're wrong. You can go even to places like Los Feliz Boulevard and watch them take their life in their hands during rush hour. There are a lot of people who are... There are a lot of people who are laborers in the city, who bike part of the way and take Metro part of the way, there are a lot of people who just choose to bicycle downtown. And they could do it much more safely if that bike path at Los Angeles has invested so much money and can connect to Glendale. And the way to connect it, the whole idea of those bridges is to start connecting all of those transportation paths. So to me, that is a nexus, assuming that we're going to get all of that, you know, those bridges done. That's the nexus to spending that impact money on this particular project. So that would be my argument. I mean, if Mr. Najarian is much more familiar with Metro and with transportation and what the plans are, and if he, you know, says that, oh, no, this will never connect up to the L.A. River bike path, then that's a much more compelling argument to me. But, you know, that's not what I'm hearing from staff. I think that's the intention, is to start getting a way for our cyclists to connect to the L.A. River bike path. Right, well, we don't have that. We have Zoo Drive, which is dangerous, we had a cyclist who lost a leg there, what, two years ago in a hit-and-run. I myself have tried to cycle to Los Angeles by going over Los Feliz Boulevard. I've done it several times, I don't ever want to do it again. So I can tell you personally that if this was complete, I would be cycling to my meetings at MWD every now and then, when I'm feeling ambitious on that bike path. But right now, I've done it, and I've gotten off at the end, you know, and I've cycled through surface streets, and it's not a pretty sight. So we need to have this kind of transportation for those who want to use it.
And let me just say, I don't disagree with you entirely. I think the Flower Plaza Bridge would connect to the bike path that you're talking about. But when you talk about transportation projects, this money isn't a congestion mitigation fee that we've imposed. And there's a difference between a parks... And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, is that the idea is for parks and library infrastructure, capital, not transportation. If we want to impose a mitigation fee, a congestion mitigation fee, I think it'd be an excellent use of that money to help develop the bikeways and the alternate transit modes to get downtown or to Burbank or whatever. But this is a parks and library impact fee.
Right, but isn't it also both? Because once people are using it for transportation, then it does become recreation at the same time, the way that the L.A. River bike path is used by people for transportation. But also, if you go on the weekends, for instance, I go to the dog park right there all the time on the weekends and other times, and the people on the weekends that are on that path are people that are taking their families out to bicycle safely away from traffic. So this functions in the same way for us then, and it gives our residents, including people in South Glendale, a place that they can bring their kids to bicycle all the way down that whatever... How many miles is it now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one miles of bike path, completely away from traffic, out of the roads, which everybody says they want, bike path, you know, bicycles and cars separated. It gives people, including people in South Glendale, a chance to do that. So I could... I understand what you're saying, Mr. Najarian, I don't completely... I agree with your perspective, I just think this fits in with your goals of giving people in South Glendale something. But I would like to hear back, but I don't feel comfortable voting for this without understanding how that goes to... How that Confluence Park Bridge goes to the L.A. River project, if it ever happens, and maybe it's so far away, we shouldn't be worried about it. But otherwise, because without that bridge, you really have a bike path that's, you know, it's a dead end. And I would rather see the money go right, you know, into that bridge perhaps, or something. I mean, I would like to know a little bit more about that.
Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council, Councilmember Friedman, I'd just like to make a couple of notes and clarification. So this item before you is not to request... The project that we are requesting appropriation and funding and award a contract for does not include any of the bridges.
I understand. But I'm saying that, but that path, though... Let me ask you this, if you were not doing either bridge, well, forget... If you weren't doing Confluence Park, would you still want to do this piece of bike path?
I would want to do it because of the potential for the bridge across the L.A. River, so it connects us to the other side.
The Confluence Park Bridge?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, okay, but that was my question, if you weren't going to do that bridge. Let's say that next month, you find out that the L.A. River Project's moving forward, and Mr. Najarian's right, we can't touch the restoration area. What did you call it?
Riparian.
Riparian Habitat. Let's say that's the case. Would you still want to do this piece of park?
I would say, based on the community outreach that we have done and the input that we have received, and the favorite... And the favorable input that we have received, folks, like you mentioned, whether bicyclists, pedestrians, they'd like to see this stretch of river walk, at least on the Glendale side, completed. So for that purpose, and the fact that we have received state grant funding, albeit not completely to finance this project, we risk the chance of losing it if it doesn't get completed. This will provide a stepping stone for the upcoming bridge, if it ever happens, if we're able to get the grant funding for it in time.
But the important... The thing that's important to me that you said is that you would do this regardless, and, you know, that you do have a significant portion of grant funding. So tell me, this is... It looks like a little bit less than half of what you already have, so it's like adding another 40% of distance? What is... What's the distance now, and what does this add?
It's only...
Come on up to the mic.
Jess. Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Friedman, Phase One is approximately one mile, and Phase Two is also approximately... I'm sorry, half mile, Phase Two is also a half mile.
So this is doubling the size of the river walk?
Correct, correct.
Okay, well, if I may, I think you took me down there when I was first elected.
Mm-hmm.
And I saw the river walk up close and personal. The first section is, what, half a mile, then there's a split, and so you can't... You have to go out into the street to get to the next section, which is half a mile, which, I mean, it's very small, it's not a long distance. But the section in between has to be connected in order for it to flow.
It ends...
I just don't know what the... I just think that it has to be done.
Currently, Phase One ends very abruptly.
Yes.
And again, the master plan all along is that it would be a one-mile stretch of a bike path and a pedestrian path, and that it would end at the confluence between the river and the wash, and that there would be a park at that end with benches and tables and an overlook, and then if we're able to eventually attach that to a Phase Three with the bridges, just opens it up more and enhances it more, and there's more connection to other amenities nearby on the L.A. city side.
This connection would make it more significant, because right now, it's just two little separate sections, and this would actually complete it and make it important.
Yeah, and it is popular with the DreamWorks and Disney folks, who do ride their bikes to work.
You know what? You know what? I'm going to go ahead and move the item, and why don't we just move the item? Let's see if there's, you know, consensus for it, and still, let's keep talking about the L.A. River part, and talk about that as we move the idea for the bridge forward. So I'll move the item.
I haven't made my call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Garvichin. Well, you can still move it.
All right.
I think the intent behind this project is great. I think we got ahead of ourselves doing our share of the path, this bike path, without knowing where the bridges are going to be, when is it going to come, even if there's funding for it or not. I mean, we should have waited on... What is the purpose of having a one-mile stretch that it deadends into somewhere, and then you ride your bike and you come back? I don't see the purpose. I know it was a popular decision, but not knowing if the bridges are going to be there or not, and I was there today as well as yesterday. It's not a place that you can have a picnic with the freeway noise and the dust and the dirt, and the vegetation is all dry. There is not one tree, there's not a shade area. The equestrian area is very small, and they can't even ride their horses, the path is so narrow, they can't ride their horses to get over the bridge, even if the bridge is built. So I don't know which way to go. I think we're trying to spend $600,000 to save our grant money of $900,000. Again, this was... The fact that we're still asking, what is this project, how big is it, what's the length of it? I think it just tells me that we did not... We didn't make the right decision in the beginning to start getting ahead of ourselves to do this project first without knowing where the bridges are going to be. I want to read you a little section about the DIF, the Development Impact Fees. It's not even for the people who are going to occupy those units, it's more for the people who are being impacted by building these units. So it says generally, there should be some nexus to geographic areas where units are being added and population is increasing. Therefore, it just increases the needs for parks. If you do a survey, if you do a survey in people around... I'm not just talking about South Glendale, Glendale is not about just South Glendale, it's the entire Glendale. See how many people even know about the river walk, and how many people are going to use it to go across the bridge and get to the other side, which is... I'm sure some people will do it. I think there are so many ways... First of all, this development impact fees are going to dry out. In two or three years, they're going to be $1 million, $2 million a year, it won't be 13, 14, 15 million a year. So for the next year, my suggestion would be, I know it's not on the agenda, to hold on tight to these funds and see what is it, have a master plan as to how are we going to spend that, those funds. Because we have Wilson Park that has no bathroom, and they've been asking for it, it's smack in the middle of downtown area for the last 20 years. We have, I don't know, Maple Park, they want shade areas, we have Rock Haven sitting there for the last eight years, we haven't done anything to it. The list goes on and on and on. To be honest with you, I don't know which way to go, because if we don't vote for this project today, what we have, the grant money is going to die, and later, if the bridge is built, even we won't have enough funds to complete the rest of it. So I think we need to be a little bit more cautious on how are we spending the development impact fees, and there are ways of adding parkland to South Glendale or portions of Glendale that are... There are needs of park, and those are the schoolyards that we can have a discussion with the school districts and see if they are open to doing a joint project and use this development impact fees in those. One is Columbus Street, you know, there are different streets... Columbus School that we can use their yard as a park. So I don't know, to be honest with you, I would be more comfortable to have, maybe Mr. Sinayan here too, to hear his opinion on what does he think about this issue? Because, again, these funds are going to dry out, and then we would need money to do a real project in a better area, and we won't have it. But again, if we don't do this...
What's the amount of grant funding we'd be losing?
Nine hundred something.
Nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, well, first, we're not going to use, I hope, downtown development impact fees for Rock Haven. I mean, I wouldn't support spending money from downtown development and the north part of the city, because they're not impacted the way the people in South Glendale are. That money would have to, I think, should come from somewhere else. But I, you know, to find $900,000 of state financing is really hard in this environment, and I think we shouldn't be so flip about turning that money down once it's been offered to us. I think we should support this, and just, you know, there are people that use it certainly, and I know that it would be, you know, a benefit, and I do think that it... You know, even if the Confluence Park Bridge isn't built, it's still... There's still possibly a way to get people onto that part of the path from behind the power plant possibly, and maybe bring people in that way so they don't have to ride so far to get to the river walk and ride through so many streets, you know, looking at the map, you know? I don't know, it's a possibility. But I just think we should be very cautious about basically turning down $900,000, this is what we'd be doing.
I mean, if I can add and just say a few things, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I mean, you have a difficult policy decision before you as it relates to the expenditure of finite amounts of money on quality of life services for the community, and they're difficult decisions for you to make, and we'll implement whatever it is that you decide ultimately. To lose almost $1 million in grant funding would be difficult, and it'd be difficult for us to write that check and send it back. And I will tell you, if we were able to receive and secure another $600,000 so we wouldn't have to use our DIF funds, we would do so, and we would not be utilizing development impact fees to this extent for this project. The... As you see on the diagram on our screen, the yellow portion on that diagram is Phase One, which has been completed, and that green portion, again, is the Phase Two portion that we're asking for funding this evening. And again, difficult decision for you to make, knowing that we have limited resources. But as Jess said, we will be coming back to you in the fall to discuss the almost $15 million that we still do have remaining to be able to deal with new restroom facilities at some of our facilities, such as Wilson, where we don't have any restroom facilities, as well as new shade types of structures, et cetera, that are much needed in the downtown core area of our community. If you don't approve this tonight, and it does die, you know, this item does die unless we're able to conjure up some sort of funding, and we would have done that, and we would have brought it forward already. So I do urge you to consider that as you take your vote, if you are going to take a vote this evening.
This doesn't state, is this a required local match?
No. No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the Prop 84 grant money is going to be there regardless. The Measure R money, the subregional funds, will be there regardless.
You are correct.
I say do what you can do with that. I just don't want to put in the $600,000...
You are correct, Mr. Mayor.
And trim down the scale and have it available for a future date for, you know, putting the bells and whistles on it. That's my suggestion, if, in fact, it doesn't pass today.
The application that we submitted for the State Prop 84 grant back in 2011 was very specific as to the scope, so it outlines line-by-line item as what needs to be completed to be able to receive that grant. The problem at the time was underestimating the cost of the project. So the maximum that we thought at the time, four years ago, was that there's a cap of almost $1 million, so that's how much we applied for. But in reality, and we have done value engineering after we received the bids, and we have kept all the important essential items within those two parks, there is no way that we can go back and trim... There is no fat, there is no way we can go back and trim some items and be able to complete these two parks in their entirety with the $960,000 in grant funds.
Well, the problem is you're putting the council in a bind at this point. I mean, the only available source of funds is our development impact fees, and, you know, what's to say that next month or next year, you're not going to say, well, we need the money to build the bridges across? And I'm, you know, I don't like being put in that situation. I feel very... I feel very leveraged to... With the discussion of, oh, we're going to lose our Prop 84 money if we don't kick in this other money for the downtown, for the development impact fees and put it over here. I mean, I... That's a problem, and I don't know how that problem occurred, but...
And again, we understand that.
It wasn't a problem of my creation, I know that.
So explain this again, because again, I'm hearing two slightly different variations. One is we lose this grant money, and the other is we don't exactly lose the grant money.
Look, he said we lose it, because it's a line-by-line, it's a detailed application.
So we would lose it then, it's not like we can apply it to something else.
They cannot scale it down and do a portion of the project with that $900,000, that's what you're indicating.
There are specific qualities...
By the way, I'm not arguing that if someone offers us, you know, grant money, we should always take it if we do a project, because this is still taxpayer money. But this is, you know, a project that we have identified for quite some time as wanting to build, so I just want to make that clear to people.
And, you know, by... I think one other thing I wanted to mention, you mentioned you won't support any development impact fees for Rock Haven, is I don't understand why, because Rock Haven is... Where it's located right now is a lot closer than any residential area from South Glendale to North Glendale than Duke Majon Park or the River Rock. River Rock, you can't even find it. I went there, I had to go around three times to find the place, which I'm not against. I think this has become a little project for a segment of the community over there in Rancho area, which is fine, we can do that for them, or the other parts as well. But by just indicating that we're not going to do anything in different, you know, parks because they were not impacted, neither was River Walk area. What impact did those developments have on Rancho area? None, absolutely nothing. That's it. They're secluded in one area, and they were not impacted at all. But we have done this project, and now we're finding out that, oh, we... It was not... But we have done this project, and now we're finding out that, oh, we, it was not, it was a popular decision, it was made, and, and, you know, now we're finding out that there are issues with the project, because I'm telling you, that embankment that is going down, if you lose control, you're gonna end up in that river. And somebody's gonna have to take the liability and responsibility for that, and it's gotta be the city. And what's the maintenance cost? What's, we can put a lot of hurdles in front of this project, that's not my goal. What, what I wanna do is understand where do we stand, and because, again, this half of it is done, it was supposed to be done the other way around. I mean, we had to get the bridge down first, then build this, so we would know how far, is it a half a mile, is it a one mile? Do we have to convert the, connect the Phase Two or Phase One together? We, we did this one mile, show me one bicyclist that, professional ones. I was there an hour and a half yesterday to just see how many, one bicyclist came in, one, and show me, you know, they, they, they are cycling groups, that there are street cyclists, and they, they're very professional, they, they cycling, and you won't see any of them over there because it's, it's really narrow. I mean, you can't even fit two, two, two bicyclists side by side on that path. And where do they end? Nowhere. And they have to come back. So it, it is a project for that area, it is a, a large park, large project for that area. Let's name it what it is and, and not go around, oh, people are going to work with their bicycles. I don't see that. I haven't seen anybody on Kenyatta Boulevard, I live in that area, during the day cycling to work. Weekends, yes. 2% of our transportation is cycling, and 99% of that is recreation. Let's, let's name it what it is and make a decision. I don't know if I wanna leave it up in the air the way it is and not do anything to the rest of it, but my, my thing is you have to have a plan as to how are we going to maintain it. I was there, you know, I backed back Europe when I was young and crazy. I was there crossing under that bridge. It's scary. Graffiti is there, there's nobody around. So you have to take everything into consideration, the safety, the, the maintenance, landscaping, the ri, we call it a river. Is this part of the river gonna be the same as the LA side, that you can use your canoes? How are you gonna launch your canoe there? It's, it's, how are you gonna use the river? You're gonna go kayaking over there? Is it gonna be deep enough? You don't have those question, the, the answers to these questions, but I think we need, we needed to build these bridges or get to that bridge funding first, build it, see where does it end, and then accordingly, design all this around. Now, it's done. I, I, I wanna finish it, I don't wanna let it, let it hang up in there, but I wanna voice my, voice my concerns because there's safety issues, not just as far as public safety, but cyclist safety. When you're riding close to the, to the river embankment, if you lose control, you're gonna end up in that river. I don't wanna be part of that, so I wanna, I wanna go on the record indicating that.
You know, I, I definitely agree with what you're saying, that not a lot of people are, it's not being used as much as it should, but in my mind, the whole impetus for doing this is to, you know, get a return on that investment, because the longer it is, like Mr. Vine said, right now it just ends.
It's, these are, these are...
The longer it is, you know, the more chance you have of people using it. But I do wanna say that my, my, my problem with bringing Rock Haven up in relation to this is I don't want the public to think that this is money that's gonna go into Rock Haven if we don't do this.
No.
Because we're gonna immediately start getting emails from people saying...
That's not what I'm saying. No, that's not what I said.
That Rock Haven is more important. So I wanna make that clear to the public. But, but I do agree with Mr. Najarian that we have spent money from the park impact fees all over the city on big projects, but I also think that we really do have a responsibility to use a significant portion of that money in South and Central Glendale for the residents who are most heavily impacted. So I don't think it's inappropriate to sometimes use some of these funds in, in large projects other places, but I, I agree that we should really be making our first priority using it in those areas.
But we haven't. That's the thing.
Because, right, because it's a very park-poor area, and the rest of the city is less park-poor. So I think that as we now have a bigger pot to spend, and, you know, next year we'll have a bigger pot to spend, whereas in the past, it was a much smaller amount, that now we need to really be very conscious of spending that money there, which is why I brought up the school district parcel across the street, because, you know, that's the kind of thing that if you're gonna drop a big chunk of change, seems to me that would make a lot of sense. And we are talking, we have been talking to Glendale Unified for quite a while about spending money on their grounds, and we have done that in some cases and are moving forward with that. So I definitely agree with you, Mr. Garpetian, that that's something that we need to take a look at here.
And the pot was really big. It was $14 million. Now there's only $4 million, $15 million. We spent $11 million already. So there is $4 million left, there is $14 million coming, we haven't received it yet. As Jess wisely indicated, we take it into account when we receive the money. We can't even, you know, we can plan it, but how are we going to plan anything before receiving any funds, and it's in our accounts? But again, let's call it what it is and, and, and move forward. It's not, it's not just the South Glendale people are gonna go use River Walk. I don't see it, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a project that it's halfway done, it needs to be completed. It is for a segment of this community that I, that I respect, and I wanna, you know, accommodate them as well. The city is not just about South Glendale or North Glendale, this is one city. I wanna, I wanna accommodate them, I don't wanna leave it halfway. But look at that, that area that you run your horse. You, you ride, you ride the horse. I mean, this is a small area, you're gonna go around, around, around. How many times are you gonna go around in one small area?
They don't even allow horses on the path. They're not allowed.
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's the problem. They should have been designed to, to allow horses as well. I mean, you're spending all this money.
Wouldn't wanna check.
Well, these are, these are different, different things, but the, the main issue that I have is safety. When, when you ride your bike, if you have children and you have this professional cyclist, that they, they, they ride, ride next to you, when they go around my car sometimes, I, I get scared, because they're, they're professionals, they're really fast, they know what they're doing, the little kids won't. And if somebody ends up in that river, God help us.
Mayor.
Devine.
I just wanna say that I, I think we're losing sight of, of the, the big picture here. River Walk was Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. It wasn't just Phase One and Two. The excitement about River Walk was the fact that we were going to connect Glendale to Griffith Park. That was the, that was the selling point. That was why people were so excited about it, and still are excited about it, that we are eventually going to connect Glendale with Griffith Park. I mean, I'm not even a cyclist, and I think that's a terrific idea. And I know that if we get to that point, it will happen, but we have to get there. And in order to get there, we have to go step by step, and this happens to be the second step. And so I think what we have to keep our, our, our eyes on, on the, the goal, and the goal is Phase Three, and that is the bridge. Now, whether it's one bridge or two bridges, I think we can decide that at a later date. I think the one bridge is absolutely a necessity to this project, to make it the, the huge success that we want it to be. Right now, I agree with Mr. Garpetian, that section of Phase One and Two, or One and One is very small, and I would, if I was riding a bike, I probably wouldn't go down there either to, to ride, because it doesn't connect, so you go on One, and it's very short. Put them together, might be a different story, especially if you're a walker. And the idea of River Walk, as well as connecting Glendale with Griffith Park, was just the idea of connecting the entire city eventually, the north to, to, you know, bikers, cyclists from up north to come down and, and go over to Griffith Park. And so I think in order to, to keep our eye, let's say, on the prize, is to focus on the big picture, that we have to get to Phase Three, and how do, we can't get to Phase Three without Phase Two.
So can I call the question? Are you seconding, seconding my motion?
I will, I will.
But before you take the vote, I think the phases were wrong, were done the other way around. I mean, the Phase Three, if never happens, the Phase One and Two is gonna, believe me, how many times are you gonna go ride your bike back and forth for one mile? You get tired of it, you're not gonna, if you cannot, connecting to Griffith Park is a great idea, but in order to do that, you need to have the Phase One to be the bridge to make sure you can connect it, then maybe this would have been a larger road, maybe it would have been a different design. But right now, you don't know where is it gonna be, you don't know if it's gonna be on Flower Plaza or the other side, but not knowing if you can connect to Griffith Park is the issue.
But, but you know, even now, and I hear people, they don't, a lot of people maybe don't ride their bikes, but a lot of people go down there and walk, and so that...
A lot of people?
Yes, yes.
Also, besides that, you have connection from the other side, because the Universal Project, don't, let's not forget, the giant Universal Project that they're putting in, a big part, their mitigation is to continue a bike path along the LA River from Burbank, right? From Universal City in Burbank, and then to connect to River Walk, which means that people who work, we have something like 7,000 people working at Disney and DreamWorks. Those people now will have a way to get it from the other side, connect to our River Walk. They, they connect to River Walk? Is there, is there a bike path gonna connect to us?
Yes, eventually, that's the plan.
So let's not forget.
It's only eventually, right? It's not there right now.
Yeah, but that's, that's in their approved mitigation. They, they weren't able to build their project without that in their mitigation. That's, that's their mitigation for building that, a big portion of it. So they're gonna be doing the bike path behind the Equestrian Center, I guess? Or somehow through there, and then connecting up with us? So our side now will bring people down to get into, you know, they'll, so we can't, let's not think that this was wasted money, because once that comes through, then all those Disney and DreamWorks employees can cycle from their new apartments in Universal City, not in Glendale, in Universal City, and they can, they could cycle to work.
Let's, let's just, let's just take it.
This is the same DreamWorks that blocked our right-of-way while we were doing Phase One?
Yes, same one.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the project. The problem I have is using our development impact fees, which have to be, as Mr. Carpet and read, have to have a nexus and are designed to ease the impact that these 4,000 units and their 8,000 accompanying residents have on our existing parks and libraries in the downtown area. So if you wanna call the question, you can call the question, but I just wanted, you know, let you know where I'm at. It's the funding. Unless you want to send this back to our city manager and our finance staff to find alternative funding ways to make up for that $594,000. We're throwing money around pretty well this afternoon. We had a, had a nice contract with the Alex, and millions of dollars of naming rights were up for grabs.
Let me ask a question, Mr....
I don't know.
...Vladimir Vladimirovich. The deadline to complete this project is March of 2016? Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Garpetian, the deadline to expend the state's Prop 84 funds is March of 2016. So we need to invoice them the entire amount.
That's easy. You can invoice them tomorrow.
Is our, is our bridge the only way that those people that are coming down the new bike path, sort of the, behind Universal City through Burbank, is that gonna be the only way that they have to cross without going on streets?
No, Councilman Friedman, there is, I, I forgot the name of the bridge, but it's farther north at the city of LA.
But then what would it connect to? Because they don't have a bike, how far does that bike lane on their side go, on the LA side go? It doesn't go all the way, it doesn't go through Griffith Park, does it?
No, it doesn't.
So they wouldn't be able to connect? What would they be connecting to when there's a bridge on the other side, going across?
John, do you have, do you have that information?
Yeah. What?
Hi, Kevin Carter with Public Works Engineering. So Burbank has obtained, I think, about $500,000 in funding at Bob Hope Drive to get across LA River. That'll be enough for them to study how to do it. They won't, at that distance, be able to probably build a bridge, but that's stage one in the process. There is the La Crete's Bridge down further south than we are, and the Universal Project comes from Witsit all the way down to Riverside, and there are, the city of LA is already working on projects from Witsit up to Coldwater and up to the Sepulveda Dam.
But if you're coming down, you're coming down that future bike path, how do you get to the LA River bike path?
Right, so...
Unless you come to ours and across.
Right. The, the bike path in general is on the other side, so we have no connection from Glendale to the bike path that goes 26 to 52 miles eventually until we get a bridge across LA River.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, how is the bike path that's continuing through Burbank and to Universal City, how is that gonna get to the LA bike path?
It's on the Griffith Park side. It'll continue all the way through. They're gonna do underneath Riverside Drive Bridge and continue up on the south slash east.
So again, if, if someone's working at Disney, not DreamWorks, let's say, but let's say they're working at Disney, and they wanna ride up that path, how are they, how could they get there now? Or when it's built? How, what's the anticipation?
They would have to fight traffic across Riverside Drive.
So unless we have our bridge, they can't get to that bike path safely.
Or they could get down to a cross.
So as, as Councilmember Devine said, this is important to be the next step towards that Phase Three, because that's the only way, it sounds like, for those people to go in the other direction as well, and to go into the valley.
Correct.
Along the bike path. So I, I think it's...
Look, I think we have to look at funding sources. Plans are great, but once we start in this, but I think I have a solution to this. I would support a loan of the $595,000, a temporary transfer from our development impact fee for this project, only to be repaid dollar one when we get any monies from the Department of Finance for the whole redevelopment. This isn't our redevelop, our former redevelopment area, is it not? The San Fernando Road redevelopment area? It's gotta be, there's San Fernando Road right there. To be returned as the first dollars back to replenish our, our Parks and Library Impact Fund.
You're talking about the money from the bond?
Yes. No, 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 the money, the loan money that, that Department of Finance scooped up.
Right, that money that we're hoping...
The 40 million.
The 40 million dollars. Is that already been budgeted, though?
Well...
The, the $3 million on an, on an ongoing basis is part of the budget, but it hasn't been programmed as of yet.
Well, there you go.
And they haven't, they haven't paid us for this fiscal year, because they're disputing that they owe us.
When we do get it, since we have it, we're at risk, it's time-sensitive, let that money come back to replenish the park, the Parks and Library Impact Fund, and I'm okay with this.
Mayor Najarian, this year's has been programmed because we were relying, we were relying on it, but the ensuing years, year 16, 17, 17, 18 has not been programmed. So if we get this year's, we would get, we would get those monies as well.
Backfill, and this is the redevelopment area. I mean, there's a nexus between that, that fund. I'm not sure how much was split between the downtown redevelopment zone and the San Fernando, but I think that's a, a legitimate use of that fund.
We can...
If I could, yeah, just because you don't have it agendized to loan the money from the development impact fees to the, the, to the project as opposed to making an appropriation. What you can do, though, at a later time, what you can do at a later time, obviously, is the council is always free to then commit, when we do get those loan proceeds, to put them back into the development impact fee fund.
Well, let's bring it back. Let's agendize that, that little swap.
Let me make a friendly amendment to my motion, which is still on the table, and it's been seconded. I'll make a friendly amendment that we approve this, but at a later date, we consider appropriating the money from the redevelopment payback, and we, we discuss that when it's properly agendized.
I'd like to tie it up in one, and I think this will last, this will remain viable in two weeks or whenever we have another full council on it. I mean, in terms of the timing of that...
We have a full council next week.
We have a full council next week.
Would that make a huge difference? If you make a difference, if you make, if you vote on it tonight or next week? On your scheduling?
It will, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It will make a difference. I won't categorize it as huge, but we're against a very tight schedule. We've already been delayed by a couple of weeks. We need to have the contractor onboard so they can start construction, so we can invoice the, the grant funds.
You have until March of next year.
Right, but, but the construction period is nine months, so it's, it's extremely tight. And it, we still have to go through the contract certification process that takes almost a month and a half.
And Mayor...
But we can wait, wait a week.
And Mayor Najarian, going back to what you had said earlier about putting council in a really difficult position. Couldn't agree with you more, as it relates to, you know, kind of needing to make a decision so that we're able to move forward with this, with the second phase. And I think we could have done a better job as it relates to laying out the master plan and really having that discussion in a holistic manner, not just with this project, but holistically as it relates to development impact fees citywide. And so I guess this is my, my, my last, you know, plea and urge for you to, to take action on this item, affirmative action on this item this evening, and say that, full well knowing that, that we didn't do a good job in the past, and, and I think that's why we put some history together, and, and looking prospectively to bring forward to you a discussion, for you to be able to tell us what your thoughts are about the expenditures of the $14.9 million that we know are going to come in, and what we do with those monies. And if you want to spend it, you know, majority of it in, in the downtown core, that's what, that's what staff will do. But again, that's looking prospectively. I understand that, and it continues to put you in, in a difficult situation, but that's why we put this forward, to say to you that, that we are going to have a process in place for you to have a strategic development impact fee program in place, like you do your capital improvement programs that, that you approve on an annual basis.
One more last question. Do we have a guest estimate as to what the cost of those bridges are going to be, like the one on Flower Plaza?
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, Councilmember Carpitian, my recollection is, and there was a range, of course, because we don't have the design plans ready, it's just a rough estimate. It could be anywhere from $8 million to $35 million.
Well, that helps.
That's, that's very rough, because we have some features that haven't been detailed, so it could go a number of ways. But if push comes to shove, we already have received approval for $3 million. If we can only get another $3 million, we could potentially build a very basic but functional pedestrian and bicyclist bridge.
I don't mind taking a vote on this item tonight, but voicing my concern about all, every, I'm not going to go around and talk about all of it again, and going on the record that I don't want any more money from the development impact fees to go into this project. So if you are short at the end of the project, 100, 200, 300,000, don't, don't, don't come to me, because I don't think I can support it at that time. We have to do our homework, even today, and make sure that with that 900 and whatever, the 600 and 900, 80 and 120, we can finish this project as it's designed. So I don't want to be, again, putting, sitting in this, being in this position, trying to make another decision as, take money from somewhere else and put it here. I hope it will be used. I hope people will bike their way to, to work, which, but I, to be honest with you, I haven't seen one yet. So it's, I lived in San Francisco for 15 years, and Marin County, which is 20% built-out, 80% nature, we had a lot of bike paths and, and, you know, Bayfront bike paths and walk paths. People, very, very, very hard, you don't see it, not very often, that they, they can ride their bikes to work every day, unless where they go has, you know, showers and facilities that you can change and get back to work. If you're a waiter or waitress and you go to work with your bike, guess what? If they don't have a shower, you cannot serve people. Again, this is a, this is a, if the bridge is ever built, it's a good project, I'm all for it. I hope it will be built. I don't know where the money is going to come from, but I will be voting on it tonight if, if the, the motion is there. And in the, with the indication that if the, the funds come in later from the DOF, not this year, the following year, we can allocate that into the, the legal way. I don't know what the legal language is, because I don't want to, you know, we, it's not in, in front of us today, tonight to vote on. But I want to amend, if you would amend your, your, your motion, that if we could get those funds to replace it, because these funds are going to dry out in three years.
But we can't, you said we can't, we can't discuss alternate finance.
You know what? When that money comes in, we can, we'll then always have the option of figuring out how to allocate it.
No, we cannot, we, okay, let me ask you this. We can't talk about it tonight, but can we agendize it for next week?
We can agendize the discussion on, rather, paying, basically, essentially paying back the, the Development Impact Fee Fund, yes, at a separate time.
Yeah, let's, let's agendize that.
So can we do that as a separate agenda item, understanding that we would be moving forward with this agenda item this evening?
Yeah, but I think we should do that, and I mean, I don't want to take that, until we know we have the money.
Right.
And until we know what we, you know, in a year when we get the money, I think that's when we need to see what the needs of the city are. But we should certainly make sure that that's an option that's brought to us at that time.
We will bring it back to.
That doesn't sound so certain at this point.
We don't even know if we're getting the money or how much.
Well, we don't even know if the bridge is going to be built or not, but we're voting on it.
Or if you're going to want the DIF, the Development Impact Fee money, to pay for the bridge. There's another, as you said, $3, $4 million shortfall for the very basic bridge.
I don't mind bringing it back, you know, sooner. I'm just saying, there's not going to be a lot of information, because DOF is fighting us tooth and nail for every cent of that money.
I know they are fighting us, but eventually, our, our, our position is that, that's what I was told when I asked the question, because we're building that DOF money into our budget, and we already did that. We haven't received it, but it's in our budget, and we allocated that money to different, different, you know, funds. We want to, we, we can, we can always put it in the agenda, that, agendize it and vote on it. If the money ever comes in from DOF, we can allocate that and pay this loan back, or pay this amount back. What's the problem with that?
Then we can agendize it if and when we get the funds.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if you...
Okay, if and when we get the funds. Well, anyway, Mr. Mayor, there is a motion on the, I'd call the question at this point.
I mean, are you, okay, we have to have two different motions, right?
No, there's just one motion.
But my motion could also be that at some point, when it's appropriate, we bring back the discussion of repaying that money. I don't have a...
No, that's another motion. You asked for a discussion on that. I would agree to that, and let's put that on the agenda for next week. Not if we get the money. Let's, I want it to be a liability from whatever fund.
We can't, I mean, under our current council policy, we can bring that back separately.
We'll bring that back separately. Next week, not when we get the money.
But the motion is to approve the item, as proposed by staff.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Sinanyan. Mayor Najarian.
No. Okay, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to agendize this item for next week?
Yes.
Yeah, it's...
Thank you.
Twelve oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council made a question or respond to the speaker.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mohol, you had submitted a card for this item?
For oral communication.
And we did hear you on this item earlier. It was an earlier discussion.
A while ago.
Okay, I do have a card from you for this portion of oral communications, followed by Roland Kadikian and Bob Olson III.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I want to talk about legacies of councilmembers Friedman and Najarian. Would you please show my first slide, Arum? We're talking about legacy when it comes to buildings in Glendale. This is the brand apartments. Notice the overhanging. Up top right is the balcony over the sidewalk. Next, please. Next, next, quick, please. There you go, the red building. This is over the sidewalk, public area. Something happened, who's responsible? There's a lawsuit. Next. Ugly buildings. Again, there is no setback here. A two-inch, a two, a one-foot planter, that's the setback. Next. Overhanging apartments, there's no setback, the building is right on the sidewalk. Next. Again, overhanging ugly balconies made cheaply. This is not classic Pasadena. This is ugly Glendale. Next. More ugly Glendale balconies overhanging the public area. Who's liable if there's an accident? When someone drops a flower pot down below? Look at that lady. She's right underneath that balcony. Safety. Who's responsible? Who voted for these projects? Mrs. Friedman, Councilman Najarian, next, please. Again, apartment balconies over the sidewalk, public airway. Next, please. Again, you see a lady under this red canopy. Again, it's a, the building is overhanging into the public right-of-way. This should be a setback of feet, not inches. Next. Again, more. Next. There you go. There's your setback. Whoa, two feet. Next. Again, we're looking at the overhanging of the building. Next. This is on Wilson. See the overhanging apartments again? Next, please. Again, overhanging balconies. And notice, there's no area around this building for loading of, of houseware goods. Next. Next. Nice picture, huh? Care to walk under that, that red balcony up there, someone? Where's the lawsuit? Who approved this in the, in the planning department of the city council? We have nothing but ugly buildings in Glendale, and we want more of them. 4,000 residents, at least. 4,000 apartments we have. Next. Isn't this nice? No, walk underneath a residence. Next.
Mr. Mohol, it's the same pictures.
Okay, I'm sorry. So here we have a legacy. No characteristics, nothing classical, the public right to, right, is right over the sidewalk. Friedman, you're on the DRV, DRB board, and you approved all these buildings. Wow, what a record of a legacy. And yet, when you were on the DRV, when someone wanted to bring in a homeowner, wanted to put an adjustment in a, no. But how many variances did we do for all these buildings in the downtown area? How many variances? Can we count them in how many fingers? All dozen. Two-foot setback balconies, failed. Variances, variances, variances. That's the name of the city council when it came to developing new apartments. Mr. Najarian, remember, you decided after the damages were done, you decided to stop building more apartments. Arum, can you put the camera on me, please, now? And on the council members? Who approved these buildings? Mrs. Friedman and Mr. Najarian. This is your legacy, and you want to apply for a higher job? A city supervisor, Mr. Najarian? A 43rd Assembly District for the Democratic Party? These are your legacies. 4,000 apartments that the residents in Glendale will have to be enjoying for the next years. Can you put the camera on me, please?
He doesn't run the camera, Mr. Mohol. Just, there's someone up there in TV land that does that.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. So the point is this. You leave, you leave your office, and the people who live or behind get to benefit, end up paying the consequences of what you did with... Now, I have a question. Was there any kickback to the city council members? Mrs. Friedman, are you still doing those producing? How are you making your money nowadays? I understand your husband is doing quite well in the landscaping business. Wasn't doing that well before you became a council lady. And Mr. Najarian, how are you doing financially?
Good. I sue people who slander me.
Oh, good. Good, good.
It's my lawyer.
Good. So these are our, these are the legacies of our two council people. Wow. Variances, balconies. When there's a lawsuit, who is in the case?
Thank you, Mr. Mohol. Arum, could you put the camera on me? And then, could you please put those up again, please? The PowerPoint. Usually I don't respond, but since we're talking about legacy, this project, hated it, voted against it. Next, please. Hated it, voted against it. Next, please.
Same project.
Hated it, voted against it.
No.
Hated it, voted against it.
No.
I hated that one, and I voted against it. Next. And I hated that, and I voted against that. And this one really drove me crazy. Voted against it. Next, please. Hated it. Next. 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 And voted against it. Voted against it. My legacy, Mr. Mohol, is someone who fought against the development of downtown Glendale, against an overwhelming vote of my colleagues, fought against the developers, and fought against the planning director and his planning staff. And if there's any doubt in your mind about that, I encourage you to look at the tapes of the city council meetings, and you will see a heated, a heated advocacy to preserve a lower density downtown. So when you say, "This is my project," you know, criticize me about other things, but this is not something you criticize me about. Thank you. Next speaker? Roland Kadikian.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and councilmembers. I feel my issue I'm going to raise is pretty petty compared to the long discussions you guys have with regards to the Riverwalk. But I'm a board member of the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, and I wanted to come here today, I wasn't planning on it, but I just wanted to come here and let you, the council and Ms. Friedman, know that with regards to the repeal of the users' utility tax, the Glendale Coalition for Better Government has nothing to do with that. In fact, the organization I think that is promoting that is called California Tax Limitation Committee. So the Glendale Coalition for Better Government has nothing to do with the repeal of the users' utility tax. And the segment, the introductory segment with regards to our picnic that's coming up ended with regards to our organization suing the city. Yes, we are, but that's how we resolve disputes in this country. And as far as I know, Glendale also sued the state of California. Just because you sue somebody, it doesn't mean you hate that person and you wish they were dead. That's not the case, and that's certainly not the case for the Glendale Coalition for Better Government. We sued the city because we had a dispute, and that's it. And we're going to resolve it through the legal system. So we'll wait, and the judge will decide ultimately at the end. So I hope we move past this idea that you are either with us or against us. Reasonable minds differ, and as intelligent people as we all are, I think we can find common areas that we can work together. So with that in mind, I think the idea with regards to the park, with regards to the Glendale Unified School District and the swap that they're trying to do with the Grand View, I think that's a brilliant idea. And at least you have my vote on getting that done. And if I can lobby the Glendale Coalition to help you with that, I'm more than happy to do that. So I hope you would see us not as an organization that is either with you or against you. We have one issues or two issues that we disagree with, and we try to resolve it legally, but everything else, we don't come here and complain about single, every single issue and decision you make. And I want to commend you on that great discussion you had with regards to the Riverwalk. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Olson, followed by Bill Weisman.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Bob Olson, and by wings of, by way of full disclosure, I am the longest-serving appointee to the Burbank Water and Power Board, and I am the current chair. But that is absolutely incidental to why I'm here tonight. I'm here tonight to voice my unwavering opposition to AB 1164 from Mike Gatto. Mr. Gatto serves both the residents of Glendale and the residents of Burbank. 1164 is a bill to prohibit cities from enacting anything that prohibits the installation, the residential installation of synthetic turf or artificial grass. When I read the bill, the first thing I did was send a letter to, a note to Mike Gatto and said, "You are overreaching." And the reason I said that was because things like artificial turf and other types of incentives are part of residents and ratepayers' rebates. And rebates are something that need to consider where the money's coming from. It's not pennies from heaven. These are actual ratepayer dollars, and because of that, ratepayers should have the opportunity to have their views on this type of thing expressed. I can say for a fact that, you know, the artificial turf is not generally embraced universally by, in fact, there is serious opposition at some various levels about artificial turf. And why rebates should then become out of the realm of setting standards by locals, by local jurisdictions is, to me, a great mistake in terms of the type of bill that is being proposed. You know, I just wanted to give you some context, because in anything I'm going to say, our board meetings are taped, and so it's a matter of public record, that when, say, our board meetings are taped, and so it's a matter of public record, that when, when Burbank has a conservation umbrella, and it has various programs under that umbrella, and one of which is called Go Native. And Go Native, as the name implies, was to encourage people to pull up their turf and put native plantings in there. When the Metropolitan Water District said that they were going to offer rebates for artificial turf, there was no place really within the program to go except in the Go Native program. So the discussion that we had at the board level was to request that the staff of BWP go to council and say, "We understand that's the only place to put it, but we'd like to ask you to restrict the rebates to side yards and backyards, and leave front yards as per the Go Native program as it was intended." And that request was actually fulfilled. As the drought issues became more prevalent, council once again revisited that and said, "We're going to allow for the use of artificial turf in front yards." And again, there was a lot more discussion at the board level, and among people involved that said, "Is there something that we can do to somehow consider other options with respect to the installation of artificial turf?" And we, again, requested that the staff, when they went back for a change in the program, asked the city council to bifurcate the two programs and call the Go Native program one thing and call the Artificial Turf program another, so that the Artificial Turf program could be looked at separately, and also that they could set standards for enacting and rebates for artificial turf. And that's where we are today. We are at the point where the council did agree to that, and we're optimistic that that item is going to come back on the agenda, where council's going to look at setting standards, et cetera. So I felt that it was important because this is a matter that came up, and I thought, Mike Gatto's particular bill seemed to me to be tone deaf, because we had been pursuing something which allowed our local jurisdiction to set standards on a subject and an item that is not universally embraced and allowed the citizens to express their own views about that. I am here tonight with the view that maybe you all would also consider at least taking a position with respect to local jurisdictions and something like synthetic turf, and not allowing a state legislated bill to overcome or over usurp the state, the local jurisdiction's ability to decide how they're going to use their own money and ratepayer dollars. And whatever you can do to that will support, I think, at least my position, which is, let's keep it local and let local jurisdiction decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
I'd like to thank Mr. Olson for coming in. I think it's, first of all, it's very important that our cities communicate, and I appreciate your coming and bringing us the information about what's been happening in Burbank with regard to this issue. I completely agree with everything that you said. And I have, as my colleagues know, grave concerns about widespread use of artificial turf for environmental reasons. I think that it's really, covering the city in plastic is not the right reaction to this drought. And I know that not all of my colleagues agree, but I think that all, I would hope that all of my colleagues agree that this should be a decision that we make that's not made from Sacramento. This is something that the people of Glendale should be able to control for their own community. So I would ask my colleagues to second us agendizing, passing a resolution opposing that bill. Even if you like artificial turf, this is a decision that we should be able to make and that shouldn't be taken out of our hands. So would somebody agree to have that agendized? Okay. Thank you. So we'll take it up at the council level and have that discussion, and I hope that you'll come back when we do. Thank you.
And just for the record, this would be stating a resolution in opposition to the Gatto bill?
Either a resolution or a letter in opposition, something like that. On the grounds of local control, not about artificial turf. On the ground, yes.
Okay, all right. Next speaker is Bill Weissman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weissman. Well, I guess the public is only the people watching on TVs, since the public behind me is gone, except for Mr. Lorenz. It occurred to me, listening to the discussion about the parks and the development impact fees, that one of the issues really is that not all parks are created equal. We have a lot of different kinds of parks in Glendale. And I know that if, where I live up in the foothills, if I want to enjoy a riparian park that has, you know, river vegetation and herons and egrets and ducks and other different kinds of wildlife, I need to travel down to the Riverwalk in South Glendale. That's not something I can get up near my house. Up near my house, what I have within walking distance is Duke Magian Wilderness Park, 700 acres of a hillside chaparral, canyons and ridges type of geography, completely different from Riverwalk or any of the other types of parks you'd find in South Glendale. And I think that all of our parks in Glendale should be for all of our residents. I kind of am of the opinion that Duke Magian Park, and I'm up there fairly often, is underutilized. It could have more people visiting. And I think it would be great if people from South Glendale or Central Glendale had some way of getting up to Duke Magian and being able to enjoy the amenities up there. And I know, for example, that Los Angeles County during the summer funds a beach bus from the Crescent Valley that takes young people out to the beaches. And I think it would be really great if there would be some way of figuring out, you know, ways of getting potential park users, people who have maybe never even been in the foothills or have gone hiking before, from South or Central Glendale, to be able to get up and enjoy all of our parks and all of the amenities. Sharon and I are docents at one of Glendale's historic adobes, the Casa Adobe de San Rafael. And one of the big problems that we see with the adobe and the park in which it sits is that it's a magnet for an awful lot of young people who don't do anything but sit around and smoke cigarettes or, you know, do worse kinds of things, commit vandalism. And it's really a shame that, you know, we seem to have an issue with young people in our city not being able to have enough recreational opportunities or opportunities to take advantage of the amenities that all of us pay for. So just as our leaders and policymakers wanted to put the idea in your head that this might be something worthwhile thinking about. And as long as I have a little time left, I wanted, first of all, to thank Councilmember Garpetian for his yes vote on the Riverwalk. I understand your misgivings. I think you did a good job of explaining, you know, why you feel the way you do. And I think it was a risky thing for you to do, to vote yes, in spite of your misgivings, and appreciate that very much. And the one other thing I want to mention, since Mr. Kadikian was here, talking about how, you know, oh, well, the Coalition for Better Government, even though we're suing the city of Glendale, we're really with you, you know, we're not against you. Well, if that is the case, I would like to suggest to Mr. Kadikian that if his organization loses lawsuit against the city of Glendale, that they reimburse the city for its legal costs in defending that lawsuit. And if that happens, then I might be willing to believe that they're with us and not against us. Thank you very much. Good night.
Do we have a bus that, I mean, is there, have we looked into a bus going from South Glendale to Duke Magian?
I'll let, I'll let the staff answer. They would have an answer. But I, my understanding is they have a parks, parks department as a program that they bust school children, school students to Duke Magian Park for different projects.
But do we have a bus just for the general public on weekends, for instance?
There's no beeline, Rob, I can tell you that.
Well, I mean, I, I think we should look into it. I think it's a good point. I know that there'll be problems. Neighbors will complain. They don't want buses past their houses. We have that complaint every time there's a bus that goes into a residential neighborhood. But there's a good argument about bringing people from other parts of the city. Given that we have used park impact fees, for instance, from South and Central Glendale, I think it's easier to make the case that that's money that benefits them if we can get people up there easily. So.
Maybe we can tie that shuttle into the downtown area. When we're not using it in the downtown, we can use it to go up north and come back down, correct? That'd be great.
I think first thing we need to do is let people know where Duke Magian is, where the park is, what's the facilities, what is 700 acres, what can you do over there? A lot of people have cars in the city. They will drive up there if they're really, I think we need to have a little outreach program to, for all of our facilities, not just Duke Magian. And, you know, let people know that it exists and it's there. Believe me, many people don't know where it is, and they heard about it, but they've never been there. So I think being, letting people know, informing people will be half the cost, because I don't know how the bus is going to get up there.
We have several parks that have bad signage. I mean, there's the park, is it Mayor's Park? There's a park that's up kind of near the sports field, a beautiful park, and there's no sign at all. And the first time I went up there, I had never heard of it, and I couldn't find it because there's no sign. And I think that's shameful, that we wouldn't put a sign on our main roads pointing to our parks. Why, how could that be the case? Mr. Garnian, how come we don't have a sign on Canyatta telling people where that park is?
There is, there is a sign on Canyatta. But, you know, the issue with Mayor's Park is the traffic noise. You go there, try to have a pick. We went there once, and that was it. The traffic noise, the freeway noise is, is, is crazy.
It's a pretty park. And I have a tree, I have a tree there, by the way.
Let's not get too far field. But before we adjourn in the memory, in the bio, but before we do that, we have to adjourn our special meeting. So if someone will move to adjourn our special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, our special meeting is adjourned. And Ms. Friedman?
Yes, tonight we're going to be adjourning the meeting in the memory of Sheila Farrell Murray. She was born in Pasadena on August 26, 1933. She attended public schools in Pasadena, graduating from Pasadena City College in 1951. When Sheila was in the sixth grade, she made up for her total dislike of math by reading more books and writing more book reports than required. She started her working life at age 19 at Citizen Banks in Los Angeles, and then went into the field of medicine as the secretary to the chief of medicine at the Good Samaritan Hospital. She later returned to banking and spent 26 years at Union Bank in both Los Angeles and San Francisco. In 1961, Sheila married Richard Dick Murray and became a stepmother to three kids, Cynthia, Valerie and Rick, and later a step-grandmother to six grandchildren and five great-grandkids. Sheila and her husband Dick finally settled into Glendale, California. In the late 1970s, Sheila created her first book, Another Damn Cookbook. And if you know, if you knew Sheila, you would know that that's a perfect title for her cookbook. And then she wrote another book, What Sauce for the Goose. Sheila Murray was very active in her community since retiring from her career in banking and was involved in numerous Glendale organizations, such as the Glendale Symphony Orchestra, Chevy Chase Estates Association, and the Chevy Chase Estates Garden Club. When she lost Dick in 2009, she wrote a bio of her newly found friend, Geraldine Saunders. It was an instant connection, and she and Geraldine have become fast friends. Their friendship turned into a wonderful book called The Love Boat Lady. At this time, Sheila continued to live in Glendale, California, in the same house where she and Dick had many wonderful times. I was really shocked to hear that Sheila was sick in the last few months. I didn't know it. She didn't tell many people. She was still active. She was still on her email lists. She was still doing her garden club and her book clubs. And she was at the last cookbook sale they had at the Chevy Chase Library, I remember, and even guided my husband and I into buying several books that she thought were the best books. Dick was one of the first people who mentored me when I was on the design review board and wanted to run for city council. He took me under his wing and, and, you know, told me that even though I was a member of the Democratic Party, that he still thought I would do a good job. And he, it meant a lot to me to have their support. Sheila, you know, had, has been a huge, you know, supporter of mine and a mentor of mine for many years. And I really, really saddened by her loss, as I know many in the community are. You know, losing her and Dick, it's really like losing a bit of Glendale, because they really did represent so much of Glendale and old Glendale, and, you know, people who take pride in the community and who are active and willing to give back right until the very end. And that's, that's what she did. And, you know, she and Dick both touched so many lives. They're definitely going to be remembered. I know I'll never forget them, and I know many people in the community won't. And I, I feel like even though they're both gone, that they're still here with us every single day. I really feel their presence very, very strongly. So, you know, this is a really, this is a really hard one for me. I, I'm going to miss her a lot. So Sheila, I know you watched every council meeting, and I know you're watching still, and we're going to miss you.
And I'd just like to say that, you know, on a happier note, she and Dick are on cloud nine together right now. And that's the way we should remember them together. They were very special people.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Or adjourned.